All right, I was just waiting for the clock to turn to be six o'clock officially, which it is now. So it is six o'clock on August the 27th. So we should call this board meeting to order. I did not pick you up in the gym on my way. So we'll start with a vote call. So if we could start maybe at this end of the table today.
Hey, Lawrence, District 5. Alex Booster, Senior Student Representative.
The Council of Children's Supreme Court. Uh, Charlie Hoover, District 1.
Tribe 6, District 3.
Take the vote from District 2.
All right. And welcome to all of our guests, uh, joining us both virtually and online. Virtually, those are the same thing. In person and online. Thank you so much for being here. So we'll, uh, I'll start with our, our, we have a mission, Director Coolidge.
We live to build schools, district, and now set the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and flow. As the official leader, the first people of Seattle, the Duwanis, the Muggleshute people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwanis and the Muggleshute tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we strive to work alongside the Duwanis and the Muggleshute people who have been living and working here since time in Memorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of lack of ground bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Um, all immigrant labor, uh, of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced and unbacked people in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize, work against the systems that have historically currently been forced, and create memories among the people we serve.
All right, now I'll let you go to stand and go.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right. We'll move to approve the meeting's agenda.
The vote.
So, all agree.
Bye.
All right, so now's our first opportunity for a public comment. There are multiple ways with which you can provide a public comment. If you are joining us online and would like to offer something, you may raise your hand or type your name into the chat. Is there anyone in person?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so then we will, um, open the floor to Robin. Robin, give us just a second and then we'll make sure that you're able to unmute yourself. All right, you should be good to go, Robin. Welcome.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I noticed tonight you have the approval of the organizational chart. That's gonna be happening tonight. I'm wondering, are you going to, when it, after it is approved, um, put names to those positions there? So, um, I know you can't really tell me all that right now, so I'm requesting that maybe we can have that when it is finalized, that we have the names put to it. It is much easier to use as a document for when we need to get, you know, information from people. Thank you.
Thank you for the bond. I'm seeing Dr. Jones is sitting here shaking her head, uh, which gives me some indication that will likely be, uh, the plan. And of course, that seems like a easier way to navigate the work chart. Where you are.
I'll just, even though I'll share the, of the staff update we sent out, we need to plan to put all the names attached on, uh, the first weekly update to all staff. So we're talking about websites. Thank you.
Um, is that another? All right, seeing no one else raising their hand, we'll go ahead and move on to the reports this evening, starting with our student representative.
Okay, I want to open my notes. Um, so yeah, um, this month, I'm a recruited student presentation to participate in the upcoming education roundtable, which will actually take place in early September. And this is to make sure that students, um, as soon perspectives are well represented in discussions that shape our state's post-secondary education and college success. And additionally, um, this month I developed and prepared a presentation for all staff kickoff for the student advisory board. And this presentation is gonna articulate the motivations and initiatives and principles behind the board. And it's also designed to inspire in the line staff members with our vision for upcoming sweet. And that's it.
Thank you so much. A lot. We have many questions. Thanks so much.
Hi, um, well, good evening, everyone. Um, just the typical staff, team, and community. Just wanna let you know that since the summer, uh, we are ready and working behind the scenes for a positive and good start to this year. We're launching the focus, refocusing on our strategic plan, which includes, um, high expectations for all, engaged learners, relationships, equity, and empathy. I also wanna take a moment to pause. We have two of our newest staff members of the district administration that I wanna make sure and call out and introduce, uh, to, uh, the board and the community. So first, I wanna, if you could, I'm standing up. Mr. Brent Nichols, stand up first. He's our Director of Food Services and he comes to us in Oregon. I'd like to have us all welcome. Brent, do you have one or two words you wanna share?
Just, um, hello, I'm Brent and eager to, uh, to join in at the school here. Get going.
Thank you very much. We love you. And our other staff member that is joining our board meeting tonight is Dr. Jessica Proctor. Dr. Proctor is our Director of BHP 12 and Call of Success. If you could stand up, please, because we can welcome you. And they have a lot of work to do. They're maybe been around running on both ends. Dr. Proctor, do you have any words you wanna share with the team?
No, but thank you for having me and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. All right. Um, other updates, just to let the community know and all staff know, we've been sending out reminders, our all-staff kickoff is tomorrow. It's gonna be at the pack at Foster High School. We're gonna start with, uh, some, uh, community building at 7:30 and some snacks and breakfast, thanks to, uh, Director, uh, Director Nichols. And, uh, we are going to be launching our important restorative healing work with Minister Teo. He's an award-winning author and we are excited to have him to bring this important work to the district. So that will start promptly at 8:30. We're gonna do an opening with, actually, these are gonna be my co-openers tomorrow. And then at nine o'clock, that's gonna start, uh, with Minister Teo. Just a reminder, all buildings are open to families. And so if there's questions, please reach out to your schools. If you're unsure, you can call our district office. And if there's, if you know of people who need assistance with enrollment, uh, please, uh, help, uh, help, notify them to call the district office and we're helping, uh, we'll be here to have, happy to help, uh, the district or at schools. Just a reminder, everyone, I'm sure if you don't know, but I'm sure one knows, school starts on Tuesday. A week from now, um, I am one of those people, a week before school starts, I start getting butterflies, but they're excited butterflies. It's a nervous and exciting energy. Kindergarten and twelve grade will be starting on September 3rd, and then the preschoolers start the week after. It's earlier lease for kindergarten now, so it's, it's, it's half days that week. Just also letting people know with their lowly photographers on site of capturing the first day of schools. We are working with the photographers. We're trying to capture the joy of the first day of school. It's not news, it's not any of that. It's us taking pictures of our staff and our students welcoming kids back to school. And then also, please take a look at the district website. We have a back-to-school guide that's posted. And, um, if you're not getting communications, uh, from your schools, it might be that there's, uh, something wrong, so we need to make sure you update your information. If you've moved or have a change of phone number, please make sure you update, um, your information. First day packets will be going out, so you can do that more formally, but I just wanna make sure that you get everything you need. Um, and we're just excited for the start of this.
Don't have questions, Bones? I just wanna say that I appreciate you using this time for your superintendent report, not only to inform the board, but to really be intentional about informing, uh, folks that are listening, um, our school community about, uh, what's happening. So, thank you for that. Um, all right, next we move to our director reports. Uh, please start this incident.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, so, um, well, there are a couple things. Somebody may know I'm involved, uh, with the Techillah Children's Foundation and we work, uh, are working with a very heavy focus on schools this year. Uh, we were invited down to an equity education event, which was handing out backpacks, et cetera. It happened to be on the same day as Hola Loo, and I think it was big brothers program, having to have backpacks. So we didn't get as high as, I mean, this was one thing, but that was just a benefit of schools. So we inherited over three hundred backpacks with Techillah Children's Foundation members help. And so the superintend, we backed our cards, got it all up here. And then the communications, uh, director, uh, a few days later had it all organized to go schools that would go through. And so came back again and helped with the distribution. Really excited when we get these opportunities from donations, because these packs came with little, uh, kits inside, pens, and other things that kids can use. So, uh, these are donations that are more than welcome. And then I guess I'm just gonna say I'm gonna be at the, the, uh, staff celebration tomorrow. Over the summer months, uh, there are a number of activities that we can get involved with, but, uh, these are the ones that I was able to do last month.
You have anything to report?
Um, I also don't have much report. I think, as I was sitting here reflecting on it, um, as I was getting ready for today, I think there's, um, probably whether it goes without saying or not, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happen, particularly, um, in kind of my capacity as a president. And so oftentimes those take up a lot more of my time that I have to dedicate to our board work. Um, and oftentimes some of those public-facing things or external-facing things tend to, to, to my spotlight back. But there's been a lot of like, a lot of that behind-the-scenes things happening for me, um, some of which are confidence, which I can't share in this space. But I just wanted to name, um, that simply because we've got a report, doesn't necessarily mean there's not work definitely happening. All right, Dr. Johnson.
So on the, uh, education and funding front, there's a couple items I wanted to talk about a little bit is, so the League of Education Voters, which is a, um, uh, community organization that advocates for education issues and generally in the state came out with an interesting report, um, this last month, called Underfunded and Unsustainable. So, um, they get a fair amount of attention. It was a pretty good, um, report about how the state is basically humanizing its, um, responsibilities in terms of funding education. Kind of hidden in there, they don't, they don't bring out the equity aspects of it quite as much, although if you read the report, it's in there. I mean, I've been talking with it for years. So anyway, it's, it's just another, um, item that's kind of hopefully gonna put some more pressure on legislature for this session to put a lot more money into education. And the other one on that front is Equity and Education Coalition, which is another community organization, which is gearing up a pretty aggressive campaign. And they're about, since it's in their name, uh, actually they're very equity-focused, so they're gonna wanna be putting, uh, advocating for a lot more money going to, uh, student-based funding system as opposed to our current kind of flat, um, funding system. So I've been working with them and their, their rubbing out, so, uh, hopefully, again, there'll be a lot more pressure on legislature this time. Had a nice meeting with the chief academic officer to kind of talk about, um, so we can get some, uh, when we get, um, students academic data. It's kind of focused on growth data, uh, for students. And so hopefully we'll, we can see that in the upcoming reports for iReady and the, and the state tests. And then also, um, Director Fuller and Debbie and I met and we went through all the headlong, uh, list of board reports and, and so forth they had last time. And kind of, we came up with the recommendations. I mean, you see them, uh, I won't go through them all, but they, some of them were combined, some of them were eliminated, and some of them were, there's a couple policies that we're gonna have to revisit. And those will come up during the, um, agenda items for policies to fix. So, um, anyway, that was a list that we needed to kind of work through and hopefully that'll be, um, work there, so. That's it.
Any questions, comments? All right, so move to, to that consent agenda. You have a motion?
So.
So I'm a voter.
Hi.
All right, so excited for our presentations for this evening. We have, um, our partners, the Long Partners with us here today, um, to kind of give, uh, a report about what has happened and then what is upcoming. And then we'll also be looking at our discipline plan and report, uh, which presumably will be very connected, so. Uh, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Hello, I'm Sue Zavala. I am the Director of a Program at the Long Partners. I use she/her pronouns. Thank you for having me. I got to see you all over the other space back last spring, um, when we had a chance to share a little bit about the work that the Long Partners does. Long Partners is an education equity nonprofit based in Seattle, and we really are working for our people. We're working for a picture where everybody thrives because they know their belong matter. And we aim to build equitable communities that focus on dignity, agency, and voice for young people. And the way we do that is by partnering, and we do that with educators, with community members, and with families to transform the way that adults show up and create space for young people to be their best selves. And one of the things that we are trying sort of say, speak to is what makes Long Partners unique. And there are many different ways of being, and we believe that our approach is unique because we integrate social, emotional learning, restorative discipline, and data and systems working. And it's that integration of all those things that create a consistent experience for kids, because the adults are showing up in that way, and that's how we get to equitable community, um, the change outcomes for kids. So that is, that is what we're focused on doing. And when I think about that and I think about your strategic plan around having engaged learners and empathy, equity, and all of those things, there really is no line between where you are going to the district and the vision that we have for students and educators. We know that our goal in the world is to grow, to, to grow successful community members, our future neighbors. And to do that, it takes both a rigorous academic program in which engagement learning, which you're all working on. And we also need explicitly teach and practice regulation, additional emotional skills. It doesn't just have, you know, just come with that. So we need both of those things. And data has to inform both of those things. So test scores and academic data, also using our discipline data, not through the lens of a weapon, but really through the lens of what patterns are happening and how can we identify what are the things in our system that aren't working? Or what are the lighting skills for adults and kids? And our schools are the best place for them to grow those skills. So not about pushing you out, about bringing you in and having our schools be a place where those skills are grown or those systems get better. And we believe we're gonna change the world by working with the grownups. And we do that in a way that is designed to have a strength lens on grownups, just like we want them to have with young people. But we do that by providing them with tools to be trauma-responsive, to be anti-racist, to show up in a way that builds community for young people. And we're aiming to shift those mindsets and practices to line up, create an equal communities. And we know that all people need to know that they're safe and they belong and they matter. And when those basic needs are met, we can engage them. So it's a critical foundational pieces, and not just for the kids, for the adults too. And I have the opportunity to work with you years, a week ago, and I really heard them speaking to this. So I think they see the need to do that with their adults, so that then that gets passed to the kids, and that's what your community feels like. And traditional school is about compliance. Because I do what I say because I said so. And we really believe that we are working to create community. So I'm doing it because I'm part of a community, because I have a voice, and because I do the right thing, because I'm part of this thing that matters to me. So we really work on what are the tools, what are the strategies, what are the ways of being that shifts us from compliance to community. And the work that Long Partners does, um, we do professional development coaching, we work in that and systems. We do social emotional learning, and we do restorative discipline. We did all of those things in various ways over the last five years in Techillah. Um, and that's the way that we're gonna continue to show up, and it looks different in different places, um, depending on what people are writing for, what people are engaging in. But those are the areas we bring here. And I'm not gonna read all the things on that chart, but just, um, one of the asks was, what'd you do last year? So that's a summary of the things that we did last year, really in the lens of professional development, supporting with your data and systems around discipline data, coaching, district support for some of your light roles, and then supporting their SEL and all those kind of things. And that was ongoing over last year.
Do you take questions as you go?
Sure.
Just one.
Yeah.
Why so many at Caskey View?
Just the, so the way that our sort of contract was set up, it is buckets of work and schools could access when they were ready to. And Caskey View, okay. So we're, we're really responsive, and when the needs are better, we do it. We show up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and so, yeah, thank you. And so this year we've got buckets of work, and although we're gonna have a smaller presentation, we're really excited to still be in Techillah. We have deep relationships with school leaders, with staff, and colleagues from one time. And, um, we're glad to be back with you all. And we divided our work over several different areas, and one of the areas is gonna be professional development leaders. We started that a couple weeks ago, and we're organizing that. We're gonna work with the, uh, principals and assistant principals. We're also going to, uh, uh, do work with the, uh, thank you, the social workers, the social workers and counselors, and a parenting session. So we've already sort of, from when I created this slide, we've already sort of divided up, how is that best gonna be used? With the idea that we'll need over time to keep growing our practice. One of the things that the leaders talked about was really getting clarity on definitions of behavior. And what does that look like? And how you may get aligned, so that then that gets rolled out to staff, so that we're all on the same page. So that's just an example of the work that we'll be doing.
So is there any volume of the vision you guys asked?
The, the piece of the, the whole staff is that, yes, absolutely, we want to get the leaders trained in those sessions and then all staff at each of the buildings. And then we're gonna do a separate session. We've already planned it out currently where we have counseling and social workers in a session, and then families, a family engagement session. We can enjoy the conversation if, if there's a need for a specific family liaison session. However, I think that if by our model and our design, like where we're at now, we will encompass our liaisons in that way. When we're training all staff in the, in the buildings, we can just make sure that they're planning to attend, at least in one of the spaces.
Yeah, I see it's really important for them to.
Yeah.
So they.
And then, and then always, anytime we have a family event, our, our community and family liaisons are there.
Yeah.
And then district goal professional development is today. We did, uh, two sessions, one on trauma-responsive practice and one on community building and problem-solving service. And they were a small, a mighty group that was thoroughly engaged and like, this should be more people, everyone should be here. So, um, that, I was like, yeah, they should. So I think there's interest and people want the tools, and how do we keep growing the ability when people are holding many directions? And then school staff, um, that is gonna be responsive to the needs of each school. They're gonna have one or two Smart Wednesdays per school. Um, and they already started reaching out and getting those on the calendar. So those, um, are, can be with the whole staff, they can be with ESPs, they can be whatever, um, is most helpful. And, uh, tomorrow, we're looking forward to, on looking at their, um, CEE data and also on restorative practice and how that can work in their, um, school. And it came out of work that their team is looking at data saying, this is what needs to get better. Let's take the time to dig in and learn and grow adult practice. I coach in support for SEL systems change. This is again, we kind of have it in buckets of possibility. But this is working with the Swiss and the data link and actually looking, coaching into looking at discipline data through the lens of this is information, how do we see patterns, how do we identify solutions? Um, and then also working with educators on students who are struggling to access more. So a lot of our work is about those tier-one practices, what happens for everybody? And then we know there are students, when we do those things, well, there are still students who need more support. So how do we use a strength-based protocol to have more tools and things to support those young people? And then also working with the various different teams you have on how do we have alignment, how do we lead into that restorative practice that you're all working on here?
I guess, so I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this, I think, in the next session. But I'm, I'm kind of looking for, um, the, uh, what we call street data, so data that's coming from students, for example, and families that are both us to, I mean, I hear CEE data, and that's a form of that. But, um, I'm just kind of curious, like, say, maybe we just settle for, and the next on how do we get, how are we gonna get, um, you know, students like student advisory committee and, you know, folks like that involved in this process?
Yeah, so I definitely will, will address that a little bit more in, in the, the next, um, presentation. And also, I think that one of the things I'm so excited about the partnership is that they're so intertwined and connected around like the need for professional development and really supporting the adults to help support students. And then through that, we'll get all being skilled on how to better get information, street data from our students and our families to tell us about their experiences, so we can more grow from that directly.
Right.
And I was here with your whole team when they were reading street data, and so we did some of those individual student conversations and things like that. So I think there's lots of possibility to.
Yeah, okay, good.
I think I have the best phrase for my question, so you're not gonna come out succinct, succinct at all. But I was just kind of thinking a little bit, your question about community liaisons kind of prompted this for me. You want me to talk about trauma, specifically like the word trauma, doesn't even translate right, but the experiences and impacts of trauma certainly do. Or, so I'm thinking about, you know, kind of how, you know, I think, how does your work with, I think, teachers specifically here in Techillah, how are you using that culturally responsive lens to really, like, one, again, thinking about the strengths approach, you know, we also know that like social emotional learning that we talk about now is, you know, like many things, been framed in whiteness, right? Whereas like social emotional practices have been embedded in communities of color forever. And so I guess like, how will we, how will we, how are you just navigating all that?
Yeah.
Not succinct.
Yeah, no, I think you're maybe that, because I think that is one of the pieces. I mean, I think social emotional learning has been used to manipulate.
Yeah.
To mark.
Social behavior.
To do compliance, to do all of those things. And we really believe that our version, way of thinking about social emotional learning is about dignity, agency, and voice. And so what are the tools that then we need to bring their whole identity into this community? And that's the lens through which we work, so we work for. And I think, um, our work is also in coaching educators to look at the practice through the lens of how's my bias affecting this decision? And so we talk over and over again, we all have it, right? And educators, banking system that is school that is seeped in racism and whiteness, we have to pause to ask that question. And we have to change our practice and on, at least be able to pause, because a lot of things, in particular, we talked about how we react to behavior versus respond to behavior in a culturally responsive way. So we talk about what's the difference in that, unless it's an emergency, how do I actually take that step back and ask myself that question? Because those are the things that make it different for kids. And oftentimes the end result behavior that we see, there are some things like defiance. Those are the things that are totally colored by lies. And what were the five things that led up to that, that were my practices?
Yeah.
That don't get documented. It's what ultimately results of how do we unpack that and go back to where we start? And how do we show up differently and how do we make space for these kids to be who they are? And hold kids as capable and give them tools to have the voice to say what's, and then what's gonna work. And I can say, the kids know it, right? They've got the wisdom, have to get the educators to show up and be ready to listen.
Just a, a two-sided question. I wanna do your, what's the most powerful thing you've delivered through this program? And conversely, what is your greatest weakness that we can help you with?
I would, I would say I think that the greatest thing that we bring is walking the talk and modeling the values and showing up in ways that we want educators to show up. So they experience things. We are not a city yet. We're just today in the training, they were doing all kinds of old places and all kinds of things. So it's about be in the experience, feel it, so that they can do different because they want to. Our work is not about do this, say this, and then this happens. It's really about, we gotta shift you as the long, we gotta give you the tools and capacity. That doesn't happen because the superintend says you will be restored, right? It has to happen because. Right? It has to happen because you have a belief in yourself and how you show up. And so I think we are able to build those relationships, create trust, see their strength and push their practice. So I think that's what we bring into the space. Um, and I think our biggest challenge, um, I think one would be, you know, the time, time and resources to get to people, right? Like being in the space with those educators today, they're hungry for it. They want to be help solve the class needs. And there's always the, hey, we don't have time. And so I think the, the resources and some of it is true and some of it is perception and all of that. But I think in strengthening the partnership, how do we have the resources to to get people the time and space to engage. And I don't think our approach is unique in that. I think in education, that's a really hard thing. And we see this work as the plate that leads to all the other things we want kids. And so we got to figure out and invest in that and give the adults a space to do it. And they don't learn it in school. I mean, I, I continue to be shocked that new educators come out, don't have the tools or the mindset.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's your question.
Thank you. All right, so the, you know, we're in our discipline plan before.
Yeah. Um, so Emmy Andrew Mon, I'm the Director of Student Services and Special Education and apologies for not introducing myself in the last session. Our presentation. Um, and so just want to just first acknowledge um, that the, the reports and memo that I sent out outlines and highlights our data and information and components of our action plan. Um, and just really want to focus on the pieces of our plan that are going to really look at how to move forward. Um, and, and knowing that there's both adaptive and technical changes that are, that are, we're going to endeavor as we go through this process. So um, when we are looking at this and what you have here is an overview, you'll see in some spaces where there's been decreases in disciplinary actions in some areas and increases in others. Um, and then one of the things that as we look at that, we're really looking at identifying, defining the behaviors and then calibrating around that. And like looking together, how do we, one, agree on the definition and two, how do we practice and role play because of the piece that comes into the decisions that people make around a disciplinary action can be subjective because what leads up to that moment can, can enter into different points. And so to Director Larson's point of like the street data and like the student and and, and family engagements and voice and like, how do we get to there? Because we've sat in meetings of families where they've been frustrated about an action. We just want to hear from them and, and make adjustments as, as appropriate. Um, but definitely want to make sure that we're hearing that and embedding that in our work with our leaders and with our educators. Um, and so like the real focus here around this is going to be on the adults. We can only change our own behavior. We can't change the behavior of our students just because we want them to. That's just not the reality. So, so what are the, the instructional moves that we take? And really looking at this from, this is an instructional problem. This is an area where we need to focus on our instructional strategies. How we're setting up our communities and schools, how we're setting up our classrooms to make space for students to engage where they're at. Because they're coming to us from all different places. Um, so some of the things that you'll see in the report, you'll see that in our elementary schools, there's more, more actions around the, the, the minor offenses that are in engaging in conferences with students and families. And so I think that one of the things that one, that part of our plan, not I think, part of our plan now is from those conferences and looking like now, how can we use what we've learned from those conferences with students and families to now inform like part in our community, what might need to happen on a different level and supporting that um, in that way. We're also looking at system changes for what data entry looks like. When we look at our data, it is unclear and quite frankly, sometimes confusing to see what happened and what's the result. And then being able to look at trends over time. And so one of the things that will have is some clear guidance documents for leaders when they're entering information so that we can look at this over time and make some like decisions around like what, where do we need to lean in on professional development? Where do we need to lean in on, ooh, are we really calibrated on this de- definition? We all can recite the definition. We can all state what the definition is, but in practice, going through, looking at different scenarios. We might have all ended at, at the same place with very different beginnings. And so thinking about what does that look like together as a group as we're kind of going forward. And then some of the pieces around the technical side is that we have missing information. So then on the backend going up. And so I'm excited to leave this work this year because we can now look at it from a monthly perspective. So we're not a year later saying, oh wait, we have all this missing data. Now how do we create a report around that? But on a monthly basis, looking like, hey, let's run a report, see where it's at and then go through and, and um, at least from a data perspective. So we can tell the story about the actions that are happening. But you know, the, then you really have to get into that street data perspective of students and families and their voices to hear like, and, and the educators as well. Like from everybody, like what happened? And so for some of the bigger pieces, we're also instituting a protocol that aligns with the belong partners work that teaches around like how do we welcome a student back into the classroom? But we're also going to use some of that framing of the language around when a big incident happens in a school or we might have to clear a classroom, we might have a big incident in a hallway that was disruptive to the greater school community. Now we're going to use that same language to debrief what happened and then learn from where it went. And so a lot of that work is going to take time. That's the adaptive piece and like trusting each other, trusting our colleagues and trusting be able to call people in versus calling out. And how to have those conversations because we also know that this is a very emotional topic. And when people are in the moment, it, it sometimes is, it's going there. So we're going to also give our leaders some tools around how to have those conversations and lead staff through those discussions that can kind of hopefully get us to a better place of like being able to better understand what's going on. Um, at least from a data perspective.
That's, I mean, I think you, you talked about patterns, look for patterns. So diving behind and head numbers here, but like, who are the victims? Who are the, who are the people getting into the, you know? Um, who are the adults that, you know, reported? I mean, all that kind of.
Access to that now in two Swedes and they have it readily available.
Yeah.
So they're using it not to necessarily put in a report for all of you, but really the purpose of that
Yeah.
is they need to be able to see what's happening and what are our practices? And they can look at it through the lens of who's getting those referrals. What is the race infancy and who's getting? We have thirty five percent of our students are black and there's sixty percent of our referrals.
Right.
That's a problem. We need to be able to name and wrestle with this a second. So they are having access to that now um, and able to.
I guess I, from, from the board perspective, yeah, we don't need to be kind of naming individuals or anything like that, but it, it, to get back to the pattern, if there's certain patterns that may have budgetary implications, you know, that come back and said, well, if we could put some more resources to this problem, then that's, that's collusion. That's what, that's the combination that I, I think I'd love to see at the, at the board level.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so to the point you just made, most sites are sets. Like in word, word written, sorry. Um, schools, school leaders get um, disaggregated data around like specific classrooms that may be having more referrals. So um, I just want to, I appreciate the really like forward, vague like forward nature of this presentation. I appreciate the, the strong action items at the end. I do have a few questions just about the data. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, and I think I'm more just curious about what you're, what you think about the, the, the data, like what the conversations are like. And I recognize that like what may be happening, you, you may not be in the, in the weeds with all of it at the school level, but um, so uh, figure two, right after figure two. Um, there's a piece that says, um, so the twenty twenty school year, there was admin student conferences, the majority of the conferences occurring at uh, Tukwala. And then the con- by contrast, the other two elementary schools had higher out of school suspension. So I'm kind of curious like what that brings up for you. And I think similarly at the graph that's above what we're looking at before, there's a high number of referrals that happened at Tukwala with really low suspension rate. So I'm just kind of curious about just what that, you know, what, what that brings up for y'all and how they're talking about that.
Yeah. So, so similar to you, to me, that brings up curiosity, like a, a space to enter into questions. And so I did. So I talked with the school leaders and said, hey, can you help me, you know, just curious about this? I shared this with them in advance. So they knew that, that I would be sharing this information. Um, and just had conversations. And so part of, I think there's some technical pieces of, of moving forward with this and also some spaces around calibrating as a leadership group. What do we enter? When do we enter and why? So just like the threshold of what that looks like. And so that, that, if you look at the, the correlation of the two graphs, which they're not next to each other, but there are more referrals at Tukwala Elementary. However, the outcome of those is, is mainly predominantly a conference with the students or family. Um, and so, and, and in contrast, there's less referrals and more exclusions than the others. I don't think, you know, outside of being a person, you know, as an administrator who's making a decision, that doesn't, I can't judge per se because I've been there before. And also it just leaves like questions. And then down a path of like, okay, so now where do we go from here so that we can be better aligned and calibrated? So that there isn't different actions happening across. And so part of that will come from training. Part of that will come from guidance documents, but a significant portion of the work is really going to be coming together as leaders and saying, okay, now how do we look at these things and what are we going to do? And then now how are we going to work with our team, our instructors, our teachers, our our lunchroom staff, like from really everybody in the school that has um, interactions with students and just making sure that we're all on the same page. Around how do we welcome students and how do we greet them? And, and you know, when I look at this, um, I wonder how many, how many of those started with something small that kind, that escalated into something bigger?
And I think you have a unique opportunity here in Tukwala because I would say it's been for lots of different schools and lots of different places. And each school has its own practice, right? And there often isn't a line in the district, like Tukwala's picture is accurate for Tukwala and they're never responsive. You sort of like, does that go down year to year? Versus, you know, it's not necessarily like we're comparing apples to apples because we have a, a difference. I think you have a unique opportunity in Tukwala with three elementaries. Where you can go, actually, let's try and get all of them dealt closer to alignment with when we write referrals, how we write referrals. And then that's data entry, that's educators. And you all have a really cool referral form because you actually have a place where teachers are saying, what did I do before this happened? What are the interventions I tried? And you were the only district I know that does that and actually asks people to say it. And last year, your S E L coaches were coaching into that. If the teacher didn't fill it out, what will we think you tried? So I think you have some pieces that as the leaders get more aligned, things will be more consistent. You'll see, be able to, but you really, it's not like you're comparing one school is worse or better. It's really they chart their own context.
Yeah.
And I think there's a way to get closer.
So, one of the things, um, I noticed on, on the charts, the, the bullying and harassment is, is a very small percentage. And um, we've been hearing from our students for many years. Through the P U survey, through the C E data, most recently at the student advisory media that, that, you know, they're telling a story about a pretty horrific harassment incident. And so our, our students are telling us, this, this is a big issue. And so when I see this small number, I, I'm starting to think, well, you know, the definition of this is, this is stuff reported by adults, right? And I think most of our students are smart enough to know, if you're going to bully somebody, don't do it in front of an adult. And so I, my suspicion is that that number is actually much higher than it is. And so I think we need to kind of delve into that, that area in particular a little more. That's why I was, I was happy to see that, I mean, we, we kind of started this discussion about having students be able to report, you know, bullying incidents. Um, without necessarily having to go through an adult. Uh, and I see, you know, that there's intention to get that going in. We, we started that before and I was told one time that, yeah, it's available and I asked the students, do you know about this? No.
Yeah.
So I mean, so, so hopefully this time we'll be able to, because I think that can bring out um, some information. I mean, just to start, just look at the numbers over time and see what's happening. And the other thing in the past, well, we can't do that because we have somebody watching it. Well, you know, safety is a pretty high priority and bullying is a pretty high priority. And you know, the other thing I've talked to some staff over the years and said, well, you know, that's kids are going through that phase. Well, you know, that's some degree true, but particularly when we're talking about bullying of our um, you know, most vulnerable students, whether it's special ed students, whether it's, you know, we have the, the story in the student advisory was a pretty horrific. Uh, a new immigrant student that was bullied in the bathroom, you know, and um, uh, students experiencing homelessness, you know, those kinds of things that we just can't tolerate and stuff. And we need to figure out, um, you know, we had a nice presentation, you know, there's a whole variety of things you could think about how to do that, but that um, show up where the avid students were working together with the special ed students, you know, so you have that connection and not only that connection, but you establish alliances. So then, you know, the students are, are everywhere, they'll see. And so then you have students that may be vulnerable, having a line. So you could think about being with that with, you know, new immigrant students. So anyway, there's a whole rich area of things that I think, I think we really need to pay some attention to that. And hopefully I'm encouraged by, I mean, you said in your action plan of, you know, collect street data and also try to collect data from students. I think that, that's, that's a really good first start to really kind of um, bring all this stuff out because I, you know, it's, I think this, this, this number is kind of under reporting it. We're not really checking the whole problem there.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I think that, I think that on, um, you're, you're probably right. I think that it's possible that the number could be higher. And one of the things about bullying specifically, but you know, harassment, intimidation and bullying, when we, we group them together in that area, oftentimes it really comes down to the definition of what's happening and then what is happening with the, the students or the students. And so what, what it could also be is that it could start with a referral for bullying, but it could end in somewhere else. And so it's possible that we would see that story, but I think that that's also something that comes when we're, when we're having those conversations around with students and families and also the educators, we can get to there. But, but that could be something in our data entry where we could highlight this, this, you know, and just being really clear about that because it's not uncommon where it starts with a referral for bullying. And it ends with a, well, actually, you know, and then there's some restorative work that happens with either two students or a group of students around, around that. So I think both things can be true. And, and I do also, I'm excited about the opportunity to give students a pathway or families a pathway because we also know that students might, even if, even though it's there, even though they might not, you know about it, they might not still use it. But their, their family could then, you know, do something in, in that regard as well. So I'm excited about that. And then also part of our endeavor is to market, to make sure that students are aware. Cause we can put it on walls, we can put it in the bathrooms, we can put it on the the bulletin boards, we can put it in the announcements, but just making sure that it's also something the students are aware of and know that they have access to that is, is also important.
And I don't, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this, but I mean, um, so in the student advisory, one that I was there, they, they were talking about a specific incident that has happened. And that's kind of where it was left at that point. So the, so the next question is, have the students come up with some ideas for how to, you know, how to address it?
Yeah. And my presentation later in this meeting, I actually did address that for one of the challenges or answers for improvement for the advisory board, which is to like have a more streamlined communication to the board about issues that were brought up at the meetings because um, our meetings are like around hour long and there's so many different stories and students' perspectives and um, for our future planning for um, this year's um, students advisory board. We've been thinking about different ways we can like streamline our community, the overall, our chain um, issues discussed in our meeting directly to the board to take action on those specific things.
You know, I think kind of related to the, the reforming these methods of reporting for students, I think one of the challenges that we specifically, or that I've been aware of since I've been on the board is that youth have stopped using those forms of reporting because the outcome hasn't been restorative for them, right? And so if, like there was, I think there was an incident uh, was it twenty twenty two? Um, and there was a lot of input from students about what support would look like for them and none of it was acted upon. And so having a robust system and opportunities for recording is only as good as what we do with that information. Um, which I feel really confident in how we're navigating, right? And how we're moving with that. I think I just have to name, even though I, I know that it's been, you know, it's, it's been named that uh, we're disproportionately excluding um, our black and brown students, but I do think it's really important to highlight. And I wonder too, like, how you're using this information in conversation? But even using like case. how you're using this information in conversation, but even using like case studies, but the fact that there's a number of less than ten of white students that have experienced exclusionary um, discipline. And like, if there's been a, a, an opportunity to say, and sometimes it's just like this is what I take for people to realize, right, is putting two, two like descriptions of, so here's a white individual, here's a black individual, here's the dis, here's the what they got sent to the office for, here's the referral information, and here was the outcome, right? And then really being able to see the stark difference to say, oh yeah, there was bias in this one. Um, and like uh, yeah, that's not okay. And I, I know we all can say that it's not okay. Um, and you, you know, I think we know as a system and in our, you know, in the state and in our country that like there's been disproportionate discipline um, for black and brown folks for a really long time. Let's move, let's like, let's do, let's do something with that, you know, um. And I really hope that we can.
Yeah, um. I agree. I think that we've been talking about it for a long time. I think we say that this data, looking at it, it's not unexpected. And we also need to get to a place of action. And I think that that action really comes down to training and then adults and, and, and what we're doing and how we're responding. Because we can't just keep saying it and just because we, we, it's not unexpected, but we need to change that expectation. And I I would really love for Tiquilla to be the, the leader in that um, and, and see those, those things change. And, and really that's really going to come down to hearts and minds and biases and, and true authentic honesty of adults who are making these decisions and having these conversations with students around their own vice. And then with each other around, it's like, okay, like, you know, safety, I, I'm going to call you in, like, I observed this and and she might not have seen that same thing that I saw, but just being able to get to a place where we can have those conversations. And I think that's going to take some true work. That, um, and I, I really would love for, for us to, to have a different, different story moving forward. Um, and, and you know, these, these, I, I don't want to say this out loud because I, I feel like it's just the thing that we say that these things take time. And we don't also have time. Our, our kids are here and now. And this is urgent and this is something that we need to really focus on and, and maybe be clear about that.
Can I add one thing? Just uh, from our learning from last year, because last year was a learning year for me, right around the data. So one shift we've made as a district is we have a priority under our anti-racist school for anti-racist disciplinary practices that's district wide. And then coupled with that, um, we've asked all the, the, uh, school-based leadership teams to add a goal to their school improvement plan, the one on discipline and attendance. As part of their school improvement planning process for this year, because we feel that they have to um, have the goal, right? If, if, everyone here has a problem of practice around this. And so hopefully we can get more, um, they can make this targeted goal, specifically looking at race, specifically looking at bias uh, in their disciplinary po- policies and all this working together um, through the plan and of the district oversight. We're hoping that we can make some headway in this because I would like to also have to go and be a leader in this work too. Do staff set individual? Um, they set individuals under their, a student, uh, they have a, they're part of the, uh, Danson framework and uh, school culture, does all of those goal setting, um, there's part of their school, uh, their goal setting individual part, but specifically for discipline. Um, it does actually have used to really run discipline, I guess. It's a good practice, right, to have, isn't like really as a, as a way of kind of using this. There is a goal, they do make goals specifically around the targeted group of students and looking at uh, either it's academic, it can be disciplinary, it is part of their, of goal-setting processes for uh, beginning of the year. So teachers have that and principals have that as well. I wonder if there, it would be worth, and you know, I think this is a would probably be a challenging thing that it's going to, it would take a second to get to, but like what would it look like for everyone to, for example, do with the goal? Personal goal, um, because it is personal work. That is also collective work, right? And um, you know, so uh, uh, you know, as you're just saying that, I think one of the things that I want to do is just like say to communities, say to every single one of our staff members, like, be ready to be a little uncomfortable. Be ready to like lean in and do some hard work. Um, because if we want to see these things change, and I certainly do, and I, I would imagine that every single one of our staff members does as well. We've got some work to do and that requires looking inward, um, being able to be humble, um, and say, yeah, I am not perfect. I hold these biases, this is how this bias shows up for me. Um, there's a thing that we talk about in our trainings all the time that, uh, around bias, like the simple idea that if you have a brain, you have bias.
Yeah.
It just is inherent in how our brains are wired and designed. Um, so like that first step of just being okay with that um, is, is a really important first step. And then to say, yeah, I, I'm okay with the fact that like that lives inside of me, now what am I going to do about it? Um, and again, that requires vulnerability, humility, honesty, um, and willingness to like not sit in this perfection mindset. Um, so get ready, I'm excited. Discomfort, I'm all about it.
Yeah, I think that that would be, I would love to, to, to get to that base. I, I will just call out and acknowledge that that with the, the goal-setting process, there's not a specific call out and those are things that we would work with our with our labor partners around, so what, what could that look like? Um, but at the same time, I, um, I think that that's important work to endeavor to.
Just to reinforce a little bit about how was the, the feedback with, with students, so really listening to students and then and then not just sitting on it, but actually doing something and, and letting them know that you did something because of what they said is other, because then that builds agency and then you get in a much deeper discussion when you, you know, yeah, I listened to that.
So just two questions. One, you can see the numbers go up as you get to middle school and high school. Um, have you sort of looked at that hard enough to say that like certain, you know, if you talk to these officers, there's what they call um, frequent flyers. And then you will just kind of be depending with that. And that's a, sort of bad, right? Their conditions is professionally bad. So are you identifying something like that? And are you trying to look for their root causes? Some of the activities that they're taking, uh, expressing at school. And then the second thing, will the new S R Os coming in, do you expect those numbers to be available? I saw a wrong one.
Yeah, to your first question of around, I, you know, I think a lot of this comes um, in, in different ways. So when we're looking at students as individuals and thinking about like, what are the, the root causes, like we, you know, we think of it as like the function of behavior. So when we start to see different patterns in students, we want to identify what's the function of that so that we can start working with the student on the instructional strategies that the teacher educators are going to focus on to help that, support that student learn some different ways of communicating what their, what their needs are. Um, in, in less undesirable ways. So that's, that's one approach. And I think really looking at our inclusionary practices and creating spaces in our school community and our classrooms that are that are built around universal design so that students are able to access information in ways that it's going to, you know, be better for all of the students in the classroom. Thinking about those things. So I think that those are things that will help. As it, as it gets older, I think that we just see things um, or, or perhaps respond differently. And so that's also part of that work around, like how do we now this is a student who's much larger, but we need to remember that like we can't expect that they're going to come in knowing some things. We need to teach them. So if we start to see that this isn't something that is is happening from them naturally, we're going to work with them and, and, and support them through that and think about like, what are, what are they communicating to us? And then how are we going to respond? Um, to answer your question around the, the school resource officer, that's something that I don't know. Um, and I think that this will be a year of learning to, to better understand what that could look like and what that partnership is going to look like around how do we support students in reducing this. I want to make sure also that we're, the interactions that they're having with students are around like not, not responding in, in big ways. That's, that's something that I want to, like, that's our, our educators and our leaders should be focusing on. So I, I don't know the answer to that. I guess I think that one of the things though, that we'll, we'll want to keep, keep tapped, keep in the conversation around, what does that look like and how, how do we support together?
Well, some of them are expert about the early learning teachers that I've talked to, not in the school district, but in, in early learning centers in Tiquilla. Have all understood since COVID, that a lot of kids were relegated to situations where their parents were busy online with work. So the normal response of that somebody wanting to their issues and their ability to target artificially those issues are were greatly diminished because they were basically sent to the, the other room because their mom is at a meeting, right? Uh, with that, what the meaning is, an inability to express, somebody took the toy. I'll say just hit the floor and have tampons. And so they're now having to learn to work through neutralizing emotional hoppers, giving them training, being able to speak about what's troubling them so that someone can resource it. They have to believe there's got to be a similar uh, far more complex situations arising at their school districts. I guess my last question is is anyone hitting it over the wall? Do you know any school districts in the country that are getting it right that they wish in your life?
I don't know, just off the top of my head, anybody's getting it right. I would say that there's individuals in our district that are severe right now today that are getting it right every day. Yeah. But I think it's just really when the people who are getting it right, I can't think of like a a goal star here. However, I can think of the actions of people who are getting it right. And those are people who are looking at uh, behaviors communication. So when a student is communicating to us with their behavior it's sometimes in very unbearable ways, like backwards, go, like what's going on? What are they trying to communicate? Communicate to us and what are we missing? What were the, the, the pieces back here? So, so I think it's more than like one whole district or school or community, but I'd say that, that so many of our educators are getting it right every day. And so it's really looking, when we look at the communication via behavior that our students are taking, and we start in backwards track to like, what are they trying to tell us and address that? Then though, that's where people are getting it right. And so that's what I really hope that with, with our partnership and our work that we'll get there for. You know, these are, and these are things that need to be practiced. It's emotional and we need to practice, practice, practice. So that when the opportunity presents to practice our, our de-escalation and our, our regulations build that we're able to do that on our own and, and we can rely on, on the skill building of the educators in this.
Yeah, I think what is a, is a pretty common thing, and I see this in like the youth development field all the time, and my assumption is probably similar with educators is that um, uh, you know, we're often like looking for, what are the, what are the, what are the steps that I need to do to respond to what I hear, right? Rather than really uh, understanding, taking the time to stop and, and really do some curiosity or whatever around like the need, right, that is being expressed. Um, and then, um, a- as you were just saying, this idea of really being able, needing to practice, not just our own process for self-regulating. And I'll also say like, I'm thirty-six and I have a hard time articulating my needs. So I think that is also just kind of like a byproduct of, um, being raised and socialized in a in a culture that doesn't actually value um, emotions and the connectiveness to our emotions, right? So it's a, it's a skill that we as adults, many of my peers are we didn't get, and so we're learning now. Um, and so we have to be able to engage. So I think one of the things I love about global partners is the work that you do is that you really do focus on kind of the introspection. We're going to talk about self and then we're going to talk about what it looks like with young people, right? And so there's that that opportunity to also build skills within ourself because we can't by any means practice something, we cannot do something that we haven't practiced. Um, certainly we cannot do it well if we haven't practiced it. And so when we're asking staff to respond um, in more restorative and more compassionate ways uh, to behavior, particularly like the most escalator ones. Um, there has to be a lot of practice and prep waiting things that happen before that.
Well, appreciate no tantrums from you so far.
You know, I, I, yeah, I agree with the, the tantrums as they happen, but they do burn.
And, and I just want to say I appreciate you bringing up the, the COVID impact because I sort of feel like I have the ability to be in lots of grades in lots of places. And I feel like we're all a bit of a big sociology experiment. And depending on what age you were when COVID happened, whether you were a baby or you were a third grader or whatever that were grown. We were all impacted and then we thought, oh, we're back to normal, but we're not, we're all different humans because of that impact. And we all have different language skills and different needs because of that. And I think we're trying to, to get back to something. And I don't know that it was perfect before, but we're all impacted and everyone's different. And so I think it shows in early learning when you were a baby, like, well, there, there's that language. But if you were a fifth grader, like my kid, like, and then you went back and said, right, halfway through, you have some weird team behaviors. So, so again, I just think all of them, wow, we're really going to be watching this for years to come. Um, how we all come out of that and how we address those language skills.
And it goes back to the adults.
Always, yeah, always back to the girls, yeah.
Thank you so much. All right. So we've got some board discussion items. Uh, the first one is the board calendar. Uh, so I know there was a, a good amount of on this at the work session. Um, so it's mostly just if there are any additions or changes. I think I wanted to maybe look at the Saturday, November ninth meeting and say, let's not do that one, only because we have our two regular meetings or there are work sessions, our regular meeting, and then lots of happens in November. And so November already feels like a really busy board month. Um, so I'd probably prefer to have that meeting on a different day, different month. Um, I do think, and, and we'll talk a little bit more when we get to the board goals thing, but I do want the time where we can have a Saturday session or some sort of work session where I look, focus on some board stuff. I just don't think it could be in November personally.
We saw the sales completely potential where the calendar was. So anything you have on moving around this mind of mine?
And then to those Saturday, the additional Saturday sessions, February eighth, May third, and August ninth. Is everyone that is sitting here at this table available? Cause right now, nothing's changed. Um, but available to attend those? Cause that's another thing, the Saturday sessions, I want to make sure, because they are focused around usually board development, uh, or superintendent con- related conversations. It's really important that we're all there. And so if we're not all going to be able to be there, I'm going to shift and do something different. That seems okay. Um. Folks have strong feelings about this Saturday, November ninth, are you okay if we take that off of the calendar? Great. Any other comments, questions about either the calendar, the presentation calendar, which, uh, maybe to like the presentation calendar, we're not initially voting on that. Or the board calendar for the meetings. So the presentation calendar can remain flexible, um, as, you know, if needed. All right, cool, great. Um, so the next is board goals. Um, and I want to acknowledge that, so in order of context, we met on July the eighth, I think that's the right day. Uh, is that right? Wait, I have it right here. We met earlier this summer. At the, at the Saturday session where we, uh, reviewed some, uh, uh, we did our, a board self-assessment. Um, and then we, uh, started to discuss some goals that we wanted to have for our own growth as a board. Um, we did not have all of our board members present. We don't have all of our board members present today. Um, and because these are board goals, I would like to make sure that we have all board input. Um, I also know that, uh, I don't, I, I think out of the three goals, um, they haven't all quite made it on the paper. Um, so I'm just saying that we're going to, uh, move past this one uh, and put it, add it back to a September agenda. We know we'll have the, the entire one there.
So you're tabling it?
Tabled it, yeah. Yes, I'm tabling the board goals. Until September.
So you need a you need a, I need a vote postponed to the next meeting. I moved that one to the goals to the next meeting.
Great, I second that. Great, all in favor of, of postponing? Thank you. Um, next is walk the general assembly. So Dr. Larson?
So every, um, year, um, in September, the representatives from all the districts representatives from all the districts in the state get together and was called the general assembly where um we vote on um there's there's two things that one is called permanent positions, which are kind of belief statements of the organization and then legislative positions which are um positions more focused on the the legislature and the upcoming legislative session. Um and so there's about, there's over a hundred of each of them and so um you know, I did, I go to these and um and I'm on the legislative committee. So there's two committees that review all these. The the resolutions committee reviews all the permanent positions and the legislative committee reviews all the legislative positions and so I I'm on that one. And um what I provided here was the list, there's like forty eight of them that we're voting on this. This is like an all-day Saturday and for all-day Friday and part of the day Saturday session usually. Um because there's, you know, lots of discussion when it gets on. So what I provided here is just a list of them that we're voting on this year. I've also included um kind of my intention how I intend to vote on them and then the whole big um assembly handle if you wanna look at the details on on any one of them. Um so I'm just, I'm just putting those, I put those out of the year in case anybody wants to discuss any of them and expects to go through all of them in any way, shape or form. The the biggest, I will tell you, the big kind of controversial one this year is um what's called local control. So there's there's a bunch of districts that that want was to to take the position that um nothing is more important than local control. And this is kind of a um if you dig down deep underneath what they're about is trying to, the legislature has passed in recent years various inclusive um uh requirements for districts to include, you know, race, regional history and uh LGBTQ uh folks in in the history books and all that. And there's there's folks who don't wanna do that. And so they're they're bringing up this issue of local control, saying that they can squash all that and local control rules everything. So um I mean, those those positions have gone through the committees and the committees have all voted them down um this year. Or they come through with recommendations to do not pass, but then they go to the full assembly. And so um I mean, I'm gonna be voting no on those and and most people will, but anyway, that's just kind of one of the it it reminds me of um the South in the in the sixties when when civil rights were being uh put forward in this and southern states were saying, oh, it's state rights. You know, it's my, it's their right to say what who can be, who can have civil rights and who can't have the rights. It's the same, the same things going here. So anyway, so I just thought put these out. If anybody wants to discuss any of them, I'm happy to discuss any of them. So we can either just do now or just we can put it on the agenda for Sep- September if people find to, if they wanna look at anything, you can let me know and so so.
And you have initial uh questions or anything related to this? Yeah, that's not gonna be on the September meeting.
Page number, you're not carrying on the handbook.
Yeah, the page number is referring to the handbook.
Um just a little, I know we've been talking more around the legislative session, but the um you remember if there's a place where it exists, but the around board members and eligibility for it to be a school board member. Um is that something that was it could or wouldn't take a stance on or do we already?
That's a good, I'm not, I I have to go look and see if there if there is a position around that. I think there was at one point. At at this point, it's too late to put in, I mean, I'm gonna issue, but we can put it in the next year. But let me go check and see if we can actually find if there is one. Yeah. The other part of this process that after we vote on, there's there's like these couple hundred, then we go through a priority process and which they asked us to do the top ten, which is always a little tricky because there's a couple hundred of them, but anyway, yeah.
Alright, great. Um so next we're gonna move to the class size discussion. So while this is a board discussion, I'm hopeful that you could just provide just a tiny bit of context about what we're looking at and.
Absolutely. I Scott, we've got Chief of Academics in Schools, Michael Nouncer EM. Um this is a brief report because the good news is we are not losing any funds. We know that's such a high priority for us. Because the uh table shown here shows what our staffing is and our classes average. We are below a seventeen um seventeen um ratio or below. So we are not losing anything for people with a seventeen to one ratio. And on the paragraph that shows uh for about every point line of compliance, if we were, that we lose about sixteen thousand, but we're not at compliance. And we have a backup plan in case something didn't come out um right in one plan. There's way to still fully above board, but just re um categorize some positions so we do always come out at the seventy to one.
Um so I guess one curiosity I have, I wonder if there was, as we were doing many of the listening sessions with parents and students and um class sizes were a big piece of just, it just came it came up a lot. Um and I remember even at the the high school listening session, there were a few students that, you know, were really concerned about what that might mean overloaded classrooms. Um so I I'm glad that for the key period three, we're able to say there, but tell them a little bit about what we're expecting. If you know, um around kind of some of the high school class sizes.
And um high secondary, especially high schools, a little more complicated because depending on the subject matter and some courses may be advanced courses, they're not gonna be thirty kids who need a certain advanced course or that specific course or certain CTE classes. So the um it's, there's more variance of class size um per class section in high school than you would see in elementary.
Do we have like a max, like no, no class would ever be expected to have more than X amount of students even in secondary level?
Um no, but we do just know we're, for example, we've talked with the administrators of the high school and there are some classes that are um approaching thirty five. We know we don't want to go beyond that. We were says different than PE or music band when they're gonna have but for this typical class probably because we all know those who are are pre prior teachers, that's hard to get to already. And with high schoolers, it's hard to get thirty five desks at a run. So you're just in high schoolers know how that is when you're really crowded. So um yeah, so that's what we have been hearing on some classes or around that range.
We have a Mac, we have a collective bargaining agreement. We have it open down by uh class sizes. And so that's the work that we're trying to do. Is not exceed the collective bargaining agreement for class sizes. We have.
There's additional costs.
And if they do go above uh of that number, then there's a remedy that we also have in the collective bargaining agreement that uh human resources works through uh through our legal relations to ensure that the teachers do go over, then there's a remedy for that. And the remedies are actually outlined also in the collective bargaining agreement. So.
What's that number in the current collective bargaining? I don't have exactly.
Uh did you want that right now?
If anyone knew what's up, okay. If not, that's okay. I can give it to you. I can also look at this.
One big advice I know that our um uh Dr. Proctor has been working with the high school staff to to look at creatively master scheduling because sometimes you might have some different classes that are very low enrollment. So we'll get maybe a way to schedule it. So instead, for example, maybe four sessions on the same topic, each have ten kids, maybe make it only two sections of twenty and then you have some teachers still available for other classes to break down the high numbers into two groups.
Okay, so there's more shipping that can be done when an after student is already enrolled in their courses.
Yeah.
Okay, and I will say that we actually have a large number of um requests to come with the foster district. So that's a problem perhaps, but that's all, we have to balance that within the um the again, the collective bargaining agreement for enrollment numbers and the staffing that we have. It's a, it's a very complex puzzle. It's not an easy thing.
Yeah, an interesting thing about class size too, which been lobbying for for a while. There was a a year or two where um the maximum class size for some grades was determined by a pre-reduced bunch of them. So high quality schools had a lower that was actually funded. They took that away a while ago, but I've been lobbying for a while to get that back. It was actually part of an initiative thirteen fifty one from years ago and it's passed and the legislature ignored it. But I mean, talking to a lot of our teachers, you know, the having, I mean, we have such a wide range of different backgrounds and students that to have a small class size, they can make a big difference. So anyway, that's an ongoing discussion with the legislature.
Thank you.
Well, alright, and then the last item for board discussion is the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. Um which obviously we will be approving uh or putting up for, excuse me, uh action this evening. Um uh last uh two weeks ago at our public hearing, we um at our work session, after work session, what kind of hearing? Uh that was our time to hear from community or an additional time uh to hear from community about budget questions, uh adjustments, things uh that folks wanted to share. Um so between now and then, I think I'm just curious, has there been any changes?
Uh any comments, you know, she heard. Uh so since the last um discussion, we've had a board session. Uh there's been no changes to any of the budget topics.
There's not a year on the day. So this um this budget is asking us to approve a a negative fund balance as it sits today, which um my understanding that was not consistent with our binding conditions, but I understand the, I think it's explained, there's some discussions going on with the E S D and O S P I. So that that um that will not be required.
So we need um when we determined that we couldn't have a balanced budget, we did reach out and had a meeting with the when I was P I and E S T need to have that conversation. Uh and so they uh are in um like I said, conversation with us um about that. And so there's two options that they can take. They can extend our binding conditions for that twenty four, twenty five zero in fund balance, uh knowing that we are are taking steps to make those reductions and um as we continue to work uh in the next several months, we're also identifying additional cuts that uh because of deadlines related to O S P I or associated with this budget. Uh so just because we don't have a balanced budget, doesn't mean that we're not continuing to work on balancing this budget.
Yeah.
So that was said. Uh so two things can happen. They can uh take the step of extending the binding condition for this uh that the zero fund balance. However, they will not extend the four percent the whole year. So no matter what, you still have to get four. So that's one option they can take. The second option is that they could decide to put a simple school oversight. Um I don't think that they're interested in that second option. Um especially because we are taking the steps and we we're showing that we're making reductions and we're working really hard to make those reductions. So I don't believe that in September, we will receive a letter um if the first option. So I I'm hopeful of that.
And also I know, I know O S P I is actually in their rulemaking process is working on the idea that if if you're borrowing the money like we are from partner or in internal that that we would actually not be in binding conditions. But I don't know where where O S P I is gonna come out of that, but.
Yeah, there's there's a, the state, there was a state law that was put in a place to say that if you borrow from the capital projects loan for rules next fiscal year, you will not be given in binding conditions. I think that's a real slippery slope than the legislation. To be perfectly honest, because all it did was dip the candy on those districts that are really facing some of the financial difficulties. We were already in binding conditions, so that rule did not apply to us. So that's the explanation of that one. So.
So I guess I can, yeah, um I can vote for this, even though it's it's a minus uh with that understanding of what's going on.
Yeah.
And also I want us to um make sure that, you know, beyond, I mean, the binding conditions had a goal to get to uh zero percent and then four percent. But I also want us to have an internal goal. We need to pay off our our loans probably. Um I I see in here that you're proposing to pay off a million of it this year and then, you know, maybe it takes a couple more years to pay that off, but that's an end. Yeah, so hopefully you have, un- under those two conditions, then then yeah, I could vote for this.
I I think in addition to that, one other thing that some of you spoke to before, uh that I think would be really valuable, just to say, I know that y'all are working on putting in more internal controls, right, to help ensure that when we end up at our six percent um that's in our policy, hopefully even more than that, um we're actually able to sustain that. Um but I think it would be, it'd be great to to, you know, start cataloging all of those so that like we can then have a a report that says, alright, now we're out of these binding conditions. Here's all of the things that we have put in place to ensure and support uh us never getting there again. Uh so that then we have some concrete things also to continue to follow on the issue that we're doing, our good diligence and partnership with you to to stay there.
Yeah, the other thing I would like to discuss and maybe this will be on a one of our policy discussions, but um going forward, how do we as a board kind of recognize that this kind of condition like this is coming before? You know, this year it was like, we look backwards, oh, it happens. And um I think if you're done with the, hopefully the bargaining is kind of decided, I can sit down and talk because I think what I'd like to do is have something in the way, if the fund balance starts edging down into that zero, then red flags should go off fairly quickly just to then come to the board and say, okay, we need to have some discussion about that. Something like that in our policy so that we can um catch these things before before it goes down down the drain. So um and I I thought, yeah, I thought of you about the exactly where the local living money is going and and that. So anyway.
Then I just wanna say thank you. Like you stepped into this position knowing like the uphill battle that this was gonna be. Uh yeah, and you just like dug in so much and like, I don't I mean, maybe we would, I don't know, but I can't imagine us being here had you not just come in and and really, really done it. Well, you haven't moved as well. The whole team, we'll disturb it on it, but I'm gonna know that you've had so many sleepless nights and long weekends and um so I'm just, I'm just really grateful for your commitment um to helping us get here.
A lot of work.
Uh yes, I agree. Are we pretty so the only thing that I'm always worried about when we have the the budget here, are we with our labor partners? You know, are we pretty set on that? And now we're not going to get, and do we have a contingency plan? If something changes, because my understanding is there's some vertiginous gonna happen. And so um how concrete is this? I guess is my is my first thought. And then what's a contingency plan if it's not very broadly that is true?
So one of the things that I will state is during the bargaining process, which is um we're now working through the next steps. The the we actually um have agreements in place. One of the key pieces that's really critical in the bargaining process is the CFO and the HR executive director are in the room every step of the way. Um making sure, going back, balancing numbers, you know, whatever is agreed upon that that is really clear to the board because there are sometimes uh things that it's a give and take, right? It's a give and take. And so when we sit together, the CFO and the HR and executive director being there, it's critical because we have to make sure that down the road for however long we make this agreement that we can be, it's part of our destabilization plan. So uh when that information comes forward at the appropriate time, which I think happens next month, is that correct? Uh that we will then um uh that's the part, that's where we discuss some of these questions. And if there's things that have come up in terms of questions, that we should address them at that time. Um but they were sitting at the table every step of the way, even until two thirty seven or midnight or whatever time. And I'm saying both uh the teachers as well, the educators, um they really spent, everyone gave all their effort to get this uh to a place where we're at right now so that we can vote in the store school. So I I think when we bring that information forward, those that we should be sitting down, asking those long-term questions. And since they were at the table, they can answer some of those questions for you at that moment.
So I have a couple of questions. Um you know, which had a bit of your um accent. What could you want?
Um, I don't have a crystal ball, so it's hard for me to to determine. I mean, you know, I think this last year was pretty rough. I think, you know, the just the way the cycle went. I mean, all bad things were going to happen last year. I mean, we had extra bikes that were scooting over plenty and uh just. I I just feel like there was just everything kind of came at once. And so um I'm hopeful that we don't have to experience some of those things in the future. Now, we do have that break, thankfully, the insurance, which covers the majority uh of any of those damages that take place. And so it's just the recovery of the the funds takes a little bit longer. So of course we have to pay the bills first and then work with the insurance company. But um, you know, we're we're, I think, getting towards the tail end of that piece as well. Um, obviously, it's taken several months. So um, you know, barring something like that happening again, I I don't know what else could really go wrong. Um, other than my projection being like totally off and all of a sudden we don't have as many kids. But I, from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, I think we're pretty well on target. So um, I'm 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 hopeful.
And then this is a first for me. Uh, I could ask you a thousand twelve, but there's, I've never um. voted on, supported a budget that is in the negative.
Uh, well, this is the first for me.
So I'm just going to officially ask it and be, is this legal?
And.
I don't want to go jail.
So as you mentioned, and that's a part of the reason why we've been having the conversations with O S P I and E S T. That's part of the reason why when we learned that we wouldn't be able to balance the budget, we uh I mean, we immediately had that conversation. And and frankly, they weren't surprised. Um, they uh, the conversation I had with E S T was that they honestly didn't think we were going to get to zero next year. And so the fact that we've made the strides that we've made and um made the cuts that we've made, they're they're actually very impressed because they're working with other districts that aren't in workforce to what what uh what we've been working on. So I think we worked as a group and as a district really, really hard to get to where we need to be so we can get financially stable.
So my confidence is very high in all of your answers, and I appreciate you that it was last meeting. Karen was saying, whoops, there's one more game. We didn't know where it was.
Uh huh.
In which it was concerning when they were on it. And then just as quickly, they said that they emailed back saying, you know what? I found, I found where it was. At least we understood why it was appearing. So to me, that's exciting. You can do the run checks and come up with the answers. Gives me a lot of confidence and support.
So I'm still, sorry, still confused by all the questions. So am I voting on a negative balance that isn't concrete? Because we don't know yet for another month as I were hearing, or our level of argument would be. Where 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 I'm a little wondering.
Sorry, I may not have answered that question. So, like I said, when we um established those budgets, um we have deadlines we have to meet with the state. Uh, if we do not pass the budget by August thirty first, we will not get seen a portion of in uh the following month um until the budget is passed. So uh because of the timelines and the work that it takes um to get a budget completed, um part of the reason why you're showing the negative fund balances is because as we've continued through the summer, we're identifying additional cuts. Um, and so that has included uh, you know, working with our labor partners, um, you know, coming up with new ideas, um looking at things, how we do things differently. So um even though today, as I speak, we have tentative agreements, um we worked with our other labor partners, uh we're continuing to look at things and doing things differently to get our balance to zero or as close to zero as possible by the end of twenty four, five.
It is because it sounds like we defer to anyone who need to have a budget by the end of the month. Whereas when it comes out in September, and you're going to revisit this anyways, because if anything changes, then they stop or wrong. If anything changes, then they're going to revoke another budget if there's something or to go directly to put our labor partners or an agreement or something, either we back, have this again.
Well, potentially. So if 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 one comes in a lot higher than um I judged it or anticipated, that means we'll have additional revenue with offsetting some measures by going with it. So there is a potential that we can do a budget extension much like we did this last spring. Um, if we're seeing these numbers come in um a a lot different than what was anticipated.
And if you can't answer, I understand that this budget is reflective of, you should have said that there's a tentative agreement. So this budget is reflective of that tentative agreement?
Not entirely.
Not entirely.
Part partially. Um, I was partially there for some things, but I could not anticipate everything. But I guess I did a brief map.
But it's not necessarily as if you're going to come back next month and say, oh, it's actually going to be negative two million instead of negative one.
So it's about as good as it gets.
Uh huh.
And anything we just talked about, we're living around between now and next month, in our future, is about fungible items.
Probably, yes.
But not likely to increase.
No.
Very good. Sweet.
Ask your own thing. So it doesn't ask anyone.
I think it's a testament for home students, it's it's pretty conservative.
Yeah, it might be. And I will be honest, mine, I it could be conservative. Uh, we did that on purpose. Uh, just because we weren't sure what was happening. Uh, when I put that in the report, E S T thought that that was a little bit aggressive. And then I thought, hmm, I think it's still a little bit conservative. So again, like I said, if if that enrollment number comes in much higher than what I projected, there is a potential that I would do a budget extension because we would have these revenues and the board, these expenditures to support those students. So. But yeah, we'll see. And we like that. Yeah, we like.
Yeah, I would be in this situation.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
You okay?
Yeah, we just stood up as we were going to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just to go back to early withdrawal report, uh on the current C D A is page thirty two. According to that size is page thirty two, section three point one eight point five.
Okay, that was the end of the question.
Good, you got it. Appreciate that. Uh, oh, now we're starting. Thank you very much. We'll move to further. Uh, has now a question to the presentation, uh starting with monthly financial statements for July. Any additional questions, comments on this?
None, whatever.
Okay. Well, then never mind. You're all, wait, should we do the financial forecast? You can't switch sides, can you switch sides? Okay, great. We'll do financial forecast, that way you can then go back to your seat. All right, any additional questions on a financial forecast?
I guess my only thought is our labor partners understand that even if we have more students, you're already getting more revenue, that we really are still in the hole until we get a focus. Figure out, right, there's there's not one one. No, I'm sure that's. Should, yeah, I'll be listening.
Not even, yeah. This page answers to this, it's like, yeah, yes.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Good job.
Uh, it's a, thank you. Yeah. Okay, uh, super, it's a student advice or a committee update. Um, before I ask, uh, if there's any other questions, is there anything that you would just like to? This was the question we mentioned, but if you want to kind of talk a story and share some highlights.
When?
Oh, okay, yeah. I did have um a little script for the presentation. So yeah, basically, it's a just a presentation to recap um the super intended to buy through board overall and uh what we have accomplished so far in the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four school year. So I'm very excited. And um since this was the first year um of of operation for this advisory board, I decided to include um with how the board came to fruition. So um last year, late September, this I put that for Joseph, it is that's um I don't ever want to include in the um advisory board. And next in the following months, we worked all together, advertised and accept applications for the board. And um that's the image of um the flyers that were hanging off that foster high school um last school year. And our first meeting was held over Zoom on April thirty twenty three. And we um discussed the important topic of anti-racist. And next, um just to briefly, we'll move over the board and to give insights to um what we're all about. So first, the purpose, the main goal of the board is to create a platform for um grades five through twelve to directly share a thought with the superintendent, Dr. Petrosa, um and how it works. Uh, we meet regularly throughout the school year, and these meetings discuss different district initiatives. And most importantly, talk about how to take action. And finally, the mission, um the mission is to empower students to share their unique um perspectives and and experiences. So, yeah. And our timeline, uh no, I mean, our community agreements. Um, I wanted to include this because in my opinion, it's very important for um especially students, advisory boards have community agreements because it helps clear sets, clear expectations and promote inclusivity and the possibility for also during our first meeting, we created um a list of community agreements. Um, and we implemented all of these ideas into all our discussions and meetings. And yeah, I thought to include these, just to give you guys an idea of how the environment is in our meetings. And just to read all the community agreements are there to be respectful. We open to others' ideas, listen intentionally, make people around you feel comfortable included. Um, don't be judgmental, be compassionate, speak using intelligent and respectful words. Um, don't talk behind each other's back, be respectful, be respectful members of the community and help um each other. So um we can move on to the next slide. Um, this is um basically like um the most, what what the presentation is all about, our timeline, what we've accomplished this year. So um as I said, our first meeting was on April third. And we kicked things off by discussing what anti-racism means to us as individuals and share some important personal experiences from our schools. And um this would have been the crucial perspective, building trust and getting to know each other in our meetings. And next on April twenty fourth, and this session become more specific, and the board identified three key key focus areas for the rest of the year, which were safety, academic policy, and student teacher relations. And the overarching um being that students are most interested in, I think, about the safety. So we had a lead that had been to how school safety impact students. And many of their observations and talk about many of their observations and concerns. Um, next on May twenty second, we continue by discussing on school safety and how it affects communities. And inspired rainstorming and identifying potential solutions where that concern that have been raised. And next on June twelve, which is our final discussion, we had a bit of a celebration for all the work that we accomplished, and we also finalized our anti-racist statement. And yeah, and currently as of now, we're planning for next year. So actually, at the offsite kickoff, I'll be presenting our future goals and our initiatives. So next, first strengths and opportunities for growth. Um, to start off with strengths, one of our biggest strengths was the level of engagement from students. Because every meeting was filled with enthusiasm because the students were deeply shared their thoughts and ideas with the committee. And um another one was um finalizing our anti-racist statements, which was a key mindset for us for this year. Um, it was a collective effort with inputs from all members of the committee. And yeah, now for our opportunities of growth, which are um even more important for our team for next year. Um, although we are happy for our achievement here, that we still have some areas to improve. Um, one thing that I noticed that um that we could have, that we could have been more effective by focusing on one topic at a time because this would have allowed us to dive deeper and read like more direct and positive impacts on students. And additionally, our approach, which we're talking about earlier with communicating broader concerns to the school board, could have been much more aligned and effective. So um other words, just more to improve how we convey our messages and ensure that we need to concrete actions. And of course, all of these will be addressed in our future planning for um this upcoming school years um of committee meetings. And yeah, thank you for listening. And yeah, any questions?
I have one question. That's only because I'm trying to look for words that is representing uh ages five through twelve. You can look at the actual board, the board seems older.
Yeah.
Um, are you serving down to five-year-olds? I mean, that's a pretty good point, saying that you represent that broad, was sort of.
Fifth grade.
Oh, good. I just saw five through twelve. My God.
Yeah, fifth grade.
Okay.
Great idea.
They do.
Very creative.
So are you saying someone more or?
Um, yeah, we've had, I'm pretty sure elementary schools, which were um, I remember our board meeting, I don't remember her name, but she's in fifth grade. And she's like one of the people that have actually been like the leaders of our conversation, who had like the bullying.
Very fierce.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, from a lot of different races.
So what else hopes for like, uh, well, I guess for two questions. Uh, are most members returning? Um, and then what's kind of y'all's hopes around recruitment? Are they like doing this annually? Or I mean, what's y'all's hopes for how to get more people?
All right. So um as of now, um, since we don't one hundred percent know of students who will be returning, which hopefully you've participated, it seemed very engaged. We, um, I am planning to still um keep applications open for this year for any more students who want to um apply for the school board since a lot since different from last year to this year, there's more students eligible for us. So he's going to fifth grade and just going through, uh, maybe this batch, you don't have the time to. Or this year, you might just be more interested in, because we had some students that applied that didn't go to um all the meetings we didn't show up. So we still need like an opportunity for more students to show up.
They're working on timing because we have students have after school activities, we had a larger program beginning than the end. And then I found when, so they did a really active job recruiting at the high school. And I had to make an effort to go into classes or assemblies at the middle elementary school. And that was pretty impactful. So we're trying to figure out how to do that again, um, take and recruit more. Because we need now, and you said a fifth graders, because everyone's was enough. But everyone said that they wanted to come back, at least most of them said that. So we'll see what happens. And they're working, we're working on logistics, but the goal is to make it a little bigger and broader. And um we actually had applicants from special needs communities. So we're really trying to think through um really what this representation would like through all um angles of our of our system.
So it's after school?
It's after school, yeah. Um, and I will say, so I want to say, so uh beginning when we met, um, you know, you have a vision, right? And you're thinking, I want to go meet the students. And I met with Alex and Dennis, they just took this. I'm just saying, the reason why it took a while is because we had some planning to do. They have, but then they created the, they created the agenda, they co-created the the community connections. I mean, the presentation doesn't even speak to behind the scenes efforts that Dennis and Alex did in terms of really launching the really focus. And I would say we're critical for them to build trust because they let the, they let, to be honest, I think anybody look, I spoke maybe ten percent of the time in these meetings, shocked. But it's true. They did most of the speaking. It was amazing. So they really, they planned it, they designed it. They created it, they cultivated it, and then they shifted when the students uh uh input shifted and they adapted. And so what the product that you have is from all of that, that they leave also behind the scenes as well. I just wanted to make sure that that was uh amazing. And then the written statement that they wrote, and that was all them, y'all, that was them. Um, I I I didn't see it until it was presented to us in the meeting. So I just wanted to share that with all of you, that this is only a student, well, student-driven, student-planned effort. So.
Um, this is more a conference to keep in mind as you're going. We talked about our last board meeting, um, student rep recruitment.
Student rep recruitment and expanding the position to sophomores as well as we said, three student reps. Um, so I created something that ended up messaging to kind of talk about. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Great job.
Yeah. Alright, next is the professional civic and service organization membership report. Any additional questions?
We kind of signed up one out of line on the question. That's under technology, one south side chamber of the Congress. There is a great organization too. But I'm wondering, is that something that's why we do that, what technology relates?
Good evening, Director Gahd, Executive Director of Human Resources Labor Relations Technology. And I prefer he in front of us. The, so this information came from, directly from the staff members. Uh, Jeff Baker was the Director of, Executive Director of CTE Technology and Assessment. And this was a program that he was part of the chamber for. Uh, several years in this leadership doing different functions and, uh. Yeah.
Do we know whatever returns was like through scholarships from Southside Chamber? Did we, 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 is this equity was spent?
Hmm. So I know that the members from the chamber were part of the CTE advisory board. And also part of the uh technology, uh, the, uh, the technology council, the structural technology council. And so there was a collaboration with. Uh, with the work that Jeff Baker is doing and the community.
Okay. South, Southside Chamber, I'm just trying to figure out, Baker is a longer, are over there the last time I checked?
Right.
Okay, and uh, so you are going to be struggling in the position he was in. Was it your intention to go over the chamber meetings?
Yeah, for parts, parts of the position.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes, yeah, yes. And that's the plan, is to be part of that one hits. When we, when we can, and I will share that with other columns that are also taking where parts of that were.
Okay, and are other districts doing the same thing?
Hmm. Yes, they should. And our president at those meetings.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, so, um. We're at Washington Space Resource Association, which I know people have found in the district in the past.
Yes.
But pretty useful, um, organization in terms of technically use of data, where you can talk to other districts. I don't, I don't see that on here.
Yeah, I am not as familiar with that particular. Program, but we didn't look into that one. Nobody has responded that they are part of that. That consortium, but we can certainly look and see where it aligns with the job descriptions that we have. And maybe I was supposed to say a lot of, um.
Assessments.
Yeah, assessments.
Assessments.
Yeah, we didn't have that conversation.
I've been part of it in the past. Um, I haven't been a part of it in the last few years, so. Um, I know we have staff that go to the RAR conference and part of going to the RAR conference is then you are part of the. So, um, we can find out if there's other staff involved, but this is reforming from district administrators, so.
It is current.
For this current year, yeah.
I know some have dropped off. Some of the memberships have dropped off.
One question, what's that last one? Last one, there is.
Yeah, the Wa, uh, Waaspo is the Washington, um, Association of Business.
Official school, business officials.
So, yeah, okay, officials.
Sounds schoolish, but it's, uh, under our students, which is kind of curious.
The, at the, on the very front page, there's all the after names.
Yeah, I just saw.
And it drops to this.
Yeah, I didn't go to the background, it's second phase. It says custodial and maintenance.
So here's about like WASTA, uh, I know that's for the board, but is it? Why would it not be more locked down here? It's because we don't pay dues necessarily to us or do we?
Oh, we do.
We do. So is that something that should be added to this report because it's still a financial cost or is it? I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I think the lens we were looking at it through was district administration principles. But I see that point and that's definitely something.
I think it might be worth adding just for, you know, transparency sake to know that like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's still.
Because it's part of the policy.
Right, yeah.
That makes sense.
The other one that I don't, yeah, so there aren't names here, so I'm. I'm concerned about, uh, the technology, um, showing you going to conferences like cybersecurity. It's pretty important, you know, I know that's, you know, keeps, I don't know, you know, it's really important for me to keep up to date on. On the latest, uh, attacks and hacking and all that and how we just add, we go to him and do, but. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not laughing because we get some really, I mean, talk about unanticipated risks. If we got hacked, that could just create havoc.
Those conferences that are attended in him are actually offered through the Washington Schools Risk Management.
Okay.
So it's a separate, it's not in special, uh, program that we have, it's through the district's insurer.
Okay.
And so they offer.
Yeah, makes sense.
Him through that and other administrators.
Okay.
So that's happening, just through a different channel. Yes.
Anything else here? Alright, they can hear it enough.
Thank you.
Um, next is the early withdrawal report. Uh, what additional questions? Yeah, if you're lost, this is supposed to have. Help you understand like how this particular report at this time is beneficial to us? Because you know, I was thinking about like sometimes, you know, this is what we made in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes.
Um, so I'm just kind of curious about how, how, how I can use this as like information just for it.
Sure. Um, I think some of it is just to look at, I'm kind of playing back, I'm looking kind of more back for, we want to show some micro details here. I'm looking at why, um, you how we know which kids are left. At the bottom of the first page, it says. Most of them, well, you know, there's three categories. Kids tell if they're going and they go. Um, kids tell us they're going, but we haven't released the draw or we don't hear anything, but there's not shown up. So that's kind of like part of, I think, through the showing the breakdown of each, um, group. And then, um, page four, which went to bar graph of, um, reasons people are playing for why they wanted to transfer to a different place. Oh, you know, high numbers, first place, I guess you would say, um, to enroll in online program. Uh, related to that is what students educational, um, uh, program would be benefited. So that's usually the reason why they would choose a non-program. And then, um, for a lot of our kids is because they moved, because you kids who were bought by parent or. Uh, home services and now your district prefer to have services then, so I think one thing, I think it's helpful to see. Why people want to rechain as soon as we can.
Maybe it's they're not quite the title, right? So when I think early withdrawal, what this is meaning, this is just anybody that withdraws. Before they graduate, is that what we mean by early withdrawal versus, okay. Okay, nevermind. This is very easy question. Thank you.
It's also, I think, on the last page, just I thought this is something we could beef up a little bit is. Um, when we know families are going, other than the ones who just are gone and. Um, asking them, you know, a little bit easier data, asking more about why you're leaving and maybe. If there's something that they're saying, well, I'm not really happy here because of, that tells us something we can be enhanced for program to make people feel like they're. If it's more welcoming or understood or better class offerings for them.
I think, I mean, to some degree, this is a reflection that. Something we've known for a long time that we're fairly mobile district, which is consistent with most. So we're going to have a lot of students moving around, which. Um, it, it, I mean, I think the state used to keep some, I mean, it'd be interesting to see where we are compared to, you know. Other districts, um, in this regard, and how that portal takes to income levels, which I suspect is fairly high. Um, it tends to be make another potential case to the legislature. I mean, again, we don't get funded by. Mobility, but a good proxy for mobility is income levels.
Yes.
And this, I mean, in terms of the impact on on our students, I mean, students moving around a lot is. Not beneficial to their education, particularly if they're moving in the middle of the year and which means it's. It also means for our teachers, it's more challenging, you know, had a lot of new students coming in during the course of the year, so. Um, anyway, yeah, it would be. Yeah, like I said, I don't think the state does this, it would be interesting to see where we get compared to other districts.
I'd have to agree, right, we did a scan, we can see a very clear plotline of income and mobility.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I use another argument for why, he should put more, yeah, in some of the streets, yeah.
Is there anyone here feel that, are we the ones that need to go to legislators on that? Because. Clear one law and I have a charm that for both of us. I used to toss the welcome nap to the world. You know, on that, it doesn't sound like a welcome desk. But that, readers, uh, of the world, and there are clearly, uh, uh, I don't know, there's. Two hundred and eighty-one cities down, you know, whatever through the state. Um, there clearly a concentration is making a problem, rent in in us, but for the dog on us. Uh, because of the way they set up the, uh, immigration processes once they move into Seattle, obviously. Very, very obvious in the nineties. And so it just seems like we ought to be able to. I saw my first question, you need to go down on doors and go. This is not a level playing field.
Um, I would imagine this is, um, something that would be benefited by active lobbying legislators.
The only thing that I have thought over the years, um, I think. If we looked at the numbers at one point, there was a lot of movement between Highline and maybe Kent and us. As families, I mean, a lot of, a lot of families will start here and then find, you know. Get more settled and find a, you know, more sense of life or whatever. And, you know, in that regard. You know, I, I mean, it's never happened, but wouldn't it be nice if, for example, Highline and. Temple and Kent all had the same curriculum. So when a kid moves, you know, from one place to another, they're not in a completely different curriculum, that's. You know, that's kind of.
Isn't that a best start for kids? It's supposed to be interesting?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, curriculum. I mean, curriculum is a very localized thing, which doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, but.
You know. So one thing that helps, I see helps as districts who are, um, really focused on fidelity to the common core standards. The districts might be, might have adopted different materials, programs, but teachers are teaching the same standards. Then that does minimize the, um, the, you know, the big difference kids face if their families move. They still learning the same concept.
Well, hopefully if the scope and sequence is the same because if you're moving in the middle of the year and your old school, they, they. Didn't teach something that the new school did and then the kid comes into the middle and he's missed out on things. And then, you know, it all gets out of sync.
We know that does happen.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask my gender-related question. Um, so what I understand is that all of this information. Is, I think, pulled from the things that they identified when they registered for school, is that right? So their race, ethnicity, gender, all sorts of things. Um, and are those, all of the questions with the way that we ask those questions predetermined by the state? Or the system that we use?
I think it's wherever is, um, built into the system, then that's how.
We have the ability to add or adjust particularly how questions might be worded.
That is a great question. I don't know, but we can look into that.
Okay. Um, I, I think part of the reason I ask, so there's a few things going on inside my head. Specifically, we probably have more than ten students within our district, right? That are not, that do not identify with the binary gender. I recognize all of the many factors that might prevent us from having that deal, one hundred percent, with comparison myself. I know the.
Hmm.
The harm, the, the unsafe, right? I know all of that. Um, and we have more than ten. Just against it, we do. I think I'm curious too, even when we think about the binary gender. That doesn't even, that doesn't necessarily mean that someone doesn't identify as trans, right? So I think I'm curious too, is like. On those enrollment forms, does it say male, female, other? Does it say male, female, with an option to put trans, non-binary? Like what are, what is being asked? And what options are, like, what, what? What options are available for someone to be able to, to either self-identify or have their parent identify them? Um, though I think, again, going back to like the safety piece of like. How can we really be encouraging or creating opportunities for kids to self-identify?
Hmm.
Um, but yeah, so like, what, what would it look like to add something in that says, so, okay, yeah, if I identify as male. Um, but I'm a trans male, uh, like that's, I'm still a male, right? But also a trans, right? So how, how can we incorporate all of those different aspects, um, into the limited? Maybe systems that we do have. Um, I just want to keep pushing us to get closer. Um, and I know that there's a lot that's out of our control and that I can totally understand that, but I do think it's my responsibility to keep.
Hmm.
Keep bringing this up, um, and keep trying to push us as a system to, to get closer to where we need to go to really have, um, belonging.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm very passionate about it too, that's. The more we know the true self of the students, the more we can reach them and make them, give them the best opportunities for learning and feeling, you know. Welcome included. So, yeah, that is very, we can check and see what is possible. I do think there's a certain, this is not based on the chart somewhere, just my guess that. Um, a certain number of kids who might personally identify as something other than just male, they might, um. Not feel comfortable listing that just for public record or because families might not.
Right. So then I feel like we need to figure out how do we create a space? Or an opportunity for those young people to show up as their authentic selves in the building. Um, and be able to, and yeah, maybe it isn't filling out a form, um.
Hmm. So are they waiting?
Yeah, just like, because if, if that's true, right, if I'm a positive gender queer person, that's going to be most of my life, right? Um, uh, and I don't, there's not a system, there's not a, there's not a, um. There's not already an established mechanism for belonging and inclusion for me as a gender queer person. And so it's going to make it. Harder for me to even feel comfortable to know how to come out and when to move, right? So sometimes we have to build, build the structure. And then. You know what I mean?
Something to step into versus a vacuum of.
Yeah.
Nothingness.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, uh, like I said a lot, and I, if, if y'all do are able to determine that, yeah, you have some flexibility in what we're asking. On enrollment forms or if you have other mechanisms, like this is right at my element, looking like great storm, how to best. Ask those questions in a way that, um, is, um, not.
Yeah, and I would love to hear your ideas because you, I think we're going to learn a lot from what you thought of, so. Um, this is not, that we should drop off the table, we need to pursue this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else here? Alright, um, so, uh, lastly is the summer school data and analysis.
I'd like to invite up Brittany LaRocca, who is our fantastic summer school coordinator here.
I'm Brittany LaRocca, I'm the summer school coordinator for kids twelve, and I go by Shee and Her.
So really important you had is, I can answer those questions only, but I, um, and I think Brittany for putting this all together for us. And it's on the first page, it shows the type of data we present here in quite a bit of details, including the type of programs. Kids will take advantage of the elementary and secondary level. Our big focus was because of limited funding available compared to previous years. We thought, where are our most vulnerable populations? And we thought it was, um, students who were newcomers, multi-level learners, who were newcomers to January on. And the most recent newcomers are the ones who were prioritized for seats. And for high schools, uh, students who are working on credit recovery. Those are our two target groups. So the data here is related to those who attended.
Uh, what's summer school usually funded? Like in the past few years, Ester has helped a lot with that, right?
Yeah.
How is it, since then, how's, how's summer school usually funded?
Where I've been before, it's usually in some kind of outside, we're in the curriculum instruction department. On top of that, we.
There is title funds and then research grants, gap tests. So oftentimes, like, that would narrow the students who are eligible for, for summer school anyway. Because they're maybe like a ton of the federal funds, whereas in the past, when we had Ester funds. Because they're maybe, like, a ton of the federal funds, whereas in the past, when we had Ester funds. We, we could be a lot more open and drawn in, who will take over to attend such. That, that's, okay, I've seen a lot of announcements.
Yes.
And in the past too, we also had teachers that were able to recommend students, but this year we made it more narrow than, uh, than our learners.
Okay.
Yeah, it was more protocol and like, um, just letting teachers know who would qualify and letting parents know, because we did get a lot of. Questions from families as well, asking about summer school and why their family did not, or why their student or child did not qualify, so.
So, um, now, if you look at the school totals, we live in a place of three times as many people with the Ester funds. And then subsequent to that, hardly raised, hasn't spread across the schools the same in proportion. As it was, just a lot smaller because of the Ester funds.
Virtual number of participants?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, it was scaled out significantly than the summer I got here that you were.
Right, so we scaled down, so like last year, we took, um, Cascade View, they've been optimized as much, or they've been like two times.
Um, so this last summer, two, this two summers ago, I was also the coordinator, we had about three hundred fifty to four hundred students, um. This year, elementary was no more than over like a hundred to one fifty. And middle school was only one class, um, and high school was only one class, and then credit recovery was two classes. Um, so elementary level was a lot larger, almost double the amount of students.
So, and then, when you look at, there's seventeen at, uh, Cascade View, so two, Thorndike and thirteen at the cutoff. With that same distribution, would it, the matter, it was a lot more, wouldn't have been that same kind of a.
And so you'll notice that Thorndike has the most amount of students, um, because of, um, we got the most amount of students during that time period. So our newcomers, we got from, I think it was November, December, until April or May is when they came to Thorndike. Um, and then they started out the year at Cascade View, um, yeah, so it depended on when they came to school and what school they attended. So Thorndike just had the most that qualified because of the time period that they came in.
Let's add some context, last year when we had the, um, asylum seeking students started enrolling. So, uh, in the fall, uh, their main hit school was Cascade View, and then by December, uh. We, we had to make a critical decision, you know, to move teachers to Cascade View, which they did not have the capacity to do. Or we made the decision then to move and open up seats in Thorndike, where we win our transportation, and we did that. And then that again, when they got full around March, uh, we then made the decision to, um, shift, uh, students to. Uh, to go on elementary school, so that's why, um, the January cutoff coincides with that, so just explain the context for the community. What the enrollment impacts were, and then how that affected summer school programming.
So let's go and take a snapshot, because when we watched the news coverage, our elementary is on the side, I mean, children. There were three hundred C, C V, and there was only one hundred on Thorndike, obviously that switched to red at some point.
Yeah.
How did that, but you can imagine why it was in the summer zone, like, how did that work out?
Yeah, okay, but based on our boundaries, if you just count the students from wherever kind of the during, if we didn't have to make any shift, it would have been at Cascade View. Which is why the decision was to put the summer school committee at Cascade View, it was one of the decisions, and, and being critical about thinking about. Transportation, walkability, all of that.
And something that changed a little bit from last year to this, um, summer was the family liaison, so a big part of reaching out to those families. Since they had a relationship with them, which really helped in attendance and getting students to come to summer school, so. Just a big thing to celebrate for attendance and having as many students as we can serve as possible.
So you're never gonna be able to, um. Like, send out a rock cup of messaging where everybody's gonna understand and, you know, whatever. Um, but do, are there any learnings from kind of like maybe how eligibility requirements were done this year around summer school? That you might learn from next year to ensure that like, again, there were a lot of questions from parents, um, uh, about like why their kids weren't eligible for summer school. Because it's been so different than it did the last few years, so are there any learnings for y'all, I think, about next year, like how you could really. Um, get that word out in a little bit, maybe more of a clear way to parents, um, again, you're never gonna be able to avoid questions that are, that are found, right?
Yeah.
It just, there's, there's.
Um, I know we did post on the website, but we did post a little bit later, so maybe posting it earlier, um, because the planning process starts really early in the year. So once we determine what students were, are going to qualify, maybe, um, posting on the website and then notifying families so that they know. Um, who's going to qualify at a time, um, and then also, yeah, like, I would say the family liaisons were a big help in reaching out. Maybe having them reach out a few times, um, because we did have families that, they reached out, and I think it was March or April, and then some. You know, summer school didn't start until June, so some families either forgot or didn't show up the first day, but, um, something that we noticed was. After they reached out a second time, um, after a few days, enrollment went up a lot more, so. Um, there is a graph in there that also shows the enrollment and everything, so, um, just, you know, the numbers that increased after the first day, um. Reaching out again to the families, which was a great help.
Yeah, and I'm thinking too about like those families that maybe anticipated that their student or their, where, where, you know. Have been eligible for summer school based on their past, but that worked, um, so even, you know, thinking about what we'd like to do, you know, more, you know. Just posting on a website is certainly not enough, right, um, uh, so just something I think I think about for next year, and even if it's like. You know, we're gonna make some phone calls to students who would have, we've seen in summer school the last three years, but we wanna let them know that they're pulling out. Because what we're really focusing on in summer school might be a little bit different.
And with, and maybe flyers too, because the previous year we set up flyers to families, um, this year we did it more based on making phone calls. Um, so maybe doing a little bit on.
Just to get some of the angst, right, that parents can have, or, um, I know what the question would be, I guess, that you all had.
So are we gonna be able to afford any some exposure?
I think that's the goal and the plan to talk through, and looking at our, our title funding, our budgeting, and looking at the team right here. I'm looking at all of you. That we actually start planning that, because I would like to find some balance in the middle, uh, between servicing and supporting our, um. Multi-level learners, of course, which are the majority of our students, but also seeing what we can also bring in more students, I would like to see we can have like something that. Uh, is maybe enough to count three hundred students, but see if we can pump up and have a little bit more students, and then have a process for eligibility. Um, and then we communicate that early, and then that's sort of what we do for the next couple of years, so we can have a bit more thoughtfulness. This year was a tougher situation, but the goal is to have, I mean, summer school is critical for our kids, for sure.
Yeah, the problem is it's shifted, it's not from the school.
Absolutely, I know, I know. Yeah, and so that's, so what we're, if we have to, keep it at the scaled down version, then, you know, lessons learned, but. If we can offer more opportunities to some of our kid, our kids, I think, uh, it's always better to have kids in school as much as they can. Their families are willing to give up that summertime for them, for sure. It was a choice.
What's great is we also have some materials left over, so keeping all the materials moving on to the following year has been really helpful, so. A lot of the same kits, if they weren't used, since we had a smaller amount of students this year, um, we'll be able to use those for next school, uh, next summer, so. Just keeping the materials and all the things organized and, you know, um, being able to use it again for the following summer, that's generally helpful.
Another good argument for the legislators, because I mean, you know, how are we funding our community liaisons and our following agents through title and something? And so if we cut them down, then, so we don't have a living for summer school, and then we got a black summer school, so, yeah.
It's lots of choices.
Yes, and using title one or lab allocations, it's eligible dollars because it's. Those focus on students who are below grade level and reading that specifically, and so that's, um, fairly easy to make that connection for kids eligible. For that portion of, um, the dollars, but then, of course, yeah, from our overall allocation, you carve out this much for summer, it's that much less than regular school year. So there's that balance between regular schoolers, that being, and funding in the summer, right?
Well, yeah, I just wanna pull off my saying, I was unable to make it to the celebration on the last day. Because I was working all over to sound, uh, the vendor, but we ended up, uh, taking a restaurant at the end of the day. At a local restaurant, and we ran into a whole bunch of instructors from summer school. At that last final gathering, and they were all upbeat, they were incredibly devoted, really happy, kids, and the classes, and things, and the difference that I made. They made, and I was very impressed with the deal.
Thank you for sticking with me.
Thank you, thank you, I do, so there's a video that Brittany just created, and so next week I will send it to you. This is a big little three minute video, just so you can see the pictures of the program, you know, send it to the board, and, and so we can have it attached.
Naomi said she'll post it on the YouTube also.
Exactly, right, yeah, so a little important for this too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, next we're gonna move to our action items, so we'll go one by one here. Um, so the first is the approval of a human resources staffing report.
So.
Any questions?
Just wanna say, uh, for, uh, uh, a former board member is coming on as a, a speech, speech language theologian. And now she's been working, Tracy Russell, who was president of the board a few years ago, and she's been, uh, working as a speech language theologian. For a number of years and wanted to get into district, so it's great to see her on the list of somebody to come in, because I know she's really loves work, so.
Sorry, Brittany. All right, all in favor of approval? All right, next is the approval of the temporary out of endorsement request.
Second, I have good questions.
Yep.
So out of endorsement, what is that, because it says, I'm, I'm just gonna play, I'll play with that. Good evening again, Eric Gergon, Secretary of Computer Resources Labor Relations Technology, for the, uh, use of that key in pronouns. So the, this particular lack from, from OSPI will allow the board of directors to. To vote on whether or not, uh, or to agree to whether or not visibly here, that's only here, uh, can. Instruct in the area of special education from September third to about November, or. Probably closer to the beginning of December, is when she anticipates that she'll be fully credentialed through the state. Uh, she has a teaching certificate, she is in a program, and she has, I believe. I have it in the memo, that she has a certain number of credits that she's achieved, which I think is seventeen of the twenty-four. That she needs, so she's very close to completing this, and she's already done the internship portion. And so she's had the field experience, uh, the super writers come in and evaluate her work, and she's grabbing some of the core.
And she's passed the West D, which is also. She passed the test already.
Yeah, so this is just the timing didn't quite align to the end of last year, when she was hoping to have it. Finished so that she could be searching for employment, but the state recognizes that timing doesn't always line up. And so they allow tools to pass it. Yeah, I mean, for me, it does, I know one thing is that would be helpful, is to weed out for her. You know, I mean, I mean, that's always would be nice as like as a support, because I don't know if I do. Right, I'm just assuming that this is happening, so, um, yes.
It's still, it's good for our students and for our, this, this, our system, yeah.
Yeah, the, so, the principal supports it, you know, we, we take the lead from the principal. The principal's worked with the educator for more than a year, uh, she was in the building last year, working in this role as well, but as a substitute. Not, so not actually, uh, doing the I E Ps, uh, and connecting all of the meetings. Um, and so this will allow her to work more independently.
So is, uh. She's got her ducks in a row, it's a housekeeping that has a, um, a matter of timing, instead of what she's supposed to, she's kind of there with recommendations. It just doesn't seem like that, I appreciate the focus of the question, but it feels like this is.
Yeah, it's, it's a important question to ask, still.
Which is why I said that, I appreciate the question, um, but it just feels like there's definitely a problem this year.
Yeah, yeah, and the thing is that, like I said, she's, you know, she's fully credentialed to, to be in the classroom, the team. Uh, she's passed all of the assessments, just means things, this last class and a half, it's not all that remain. Great.
All in favor of approval? All right, uh, thank you, next is approval of resolution number nine five three, adopting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Any lingering questions, comments?
See you in a while.
Okay, um, so just again, just recognizing that we as a board understand the, that we are approving a, um. Potential name of any fund balance, um, that our CFO has been in continuous contact with OSPI and E S D. Um, and, uh, we've been informed that we will not go to jail for approving this budget, um. It's all in favor of approval.
You didn't make a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we don't, uh, all right, next is the approval of the N W R D C membership agreement for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. So, any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of approval? Uh, next is the rule of resolution number nine five four, adoption of the H R A plan in V, with Viva.
So we have motion, so, uh, any questions, comments?
So, nine ten meeting, this, this, this is not a cause to the district?
Uh, uh, no, it is not a cause to the district. They're actually employed in actions.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Uh, all in favor? All right, next is approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five board calendar, as it was presented earlier, without the November ninth. Uh, meeting.
So as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Um, next is the approval of the board operating agreements. Okay, uh, I recognize that I was not here, uh, when we did the, um. Discussion around this, so there are just two things that I wanted to just name before we approved, and, um, I also like wanna approve them. Recognizing that I might bring them forward again, um, in a month or two, uh, and I'll show the reasons why, so, um, the first one. Uh, it's a, it's just a word, uh, that I think to me feels. Uh, not necessary, so on the communication piece, uh, one of the new items, it's in red, it says. All communications to, along with any responses representing the board will immediately be shared with all board members. In matters of content and, and collecting information, how long, how, how our work, so I think for me, it's the word immediately, um, that throws me off a little bit. Um, that plays into a sense of urgency, but I just don't believe to be into, and a recognition that like, we all have other lives, and so. Um, I would say probably more, all communications, all responses representing the board will, um, in a timely manner, be shared with all board members. So that it doesn't, like, I'm not gonna stop anything I'm doing, just to.
I would go as soon as possible, so every time in there. Well, I'm looking to amend it to say that.
I'd rather say the time in there, um, but so maybe we can sit on it, um. Uh, uh, version of the board will, so for now, we just take out the word immediately, if we're gonna approve them. Uh, and say the board will, uh, yeah.
I would have a time span in there, so.
Okay, so I think for me, uh, again, it's currently is sitting in the role of. President, who is the one who's been responsible for doing all this communication, I don't have the capacity to do it immediately. Um, so I think, again, timely manner, see, it feels reasonable to me, um. Even as soon as possible, I think, can play a little bit into the urgency, um, and there are definitely some things that can be urgent.
How about before the next board meeting?
Uh, I think if it's relevant to the board meeting, that makes sense, it's not always getting relevant to the board meeting.
I guess where I have hard to know this is, I've been a president of city council two times, and a pool commission once, and it wasn't needed. The reason it wasn't needed is because it represented that body, and so what immediate means, not like the next hour. You tell me what immediate means to you, it's not the next day, it's not even the next week, it says rapidly, you can get it done, so. But the idea of not having urgency to share information is actually kind of okay at least.
So the definition of immediately is probably not in a, in a few weeks, right, so, um. I, I hear you, you've done that role, we are different people, right, that have different.
We're not talking about the human, we're talking about the position.
I understand that, I understand that, these are also a fluid document, um. So if we can't have a consensus on that particular word, um, I would like to take out immediately, I definitely don't want that there, um. Um, because again, immediate is right away.
I'd like to suggest as soon as possible. As amended.
Any thoughts?
That's a motion for amended.
Or, or.
There's a second to that.
Well, I, I guess it's, yeah, trying to imagine what these, what these items are.
Yeah.
And why it's, why, I mean, it's, it is coming out as an email and it's just a matter of DC on, on the email. Which can go off at the same, since we have the same time.
Like, why did this get put in? Maybe that's the question. Again, if that would be here, what was the context around?
Yeah, I received emails and I have no idea, I haven't responded to that person, that was a public task. It was to the cast of the board.
So I, I, okay. I.
And so I have to walk through the process and these are, and those are the process.
Okay. I, yeah, I think that's my. I think that's probably what we should do, um, uh, so the other item that I wanted to, uh, name is that, um, uh, so there was a rule point out in the one of the frigid conversations agreements, we're actually going to be shifting those and not utilizing those at least right now. Um, and instead, uh, as a part of our anchor races goal, um, we're going to be creating or establishing our own, uh, norms of practice, um, and so, uh, I would rather, uh, leave out that page, that, and a piece of outrageous conversations to then be replaced by the norms that, of norms of operating that we agree to. Um, and then additionally, it feels like a miss that there's not a specific bucket, um, around race and equity. Um, so we've got guy in principle, grocery responsibilities, media comic, et cetera, there needs to be one specifically of our mission equity. Um, I don't know what that is yet, um, so all I can say, I'm good tabling it, the whole thing. Um, I'm okay approving it with the understanding that we will come back, uh, in a month or two and make updates. Um, but if it feels better to just table it till we can do that, I will go with that.
Well, maybe a motion to, um, it's not table anymore, I just said it a few minutes ago, to. Maybe it's in the next week, but it's not, it's not table, tables that go. And, uh, and, um.
It's not to be.
And Robert rules.
I don't think, I don't think that should, I don't feel like Robert rules, like, okay, so we're gonna, um, uh, motion to, to, table this, uh, to neck to, um, a future meeting, I don't know, we'll save which one, uh, because we need to do some, uh, a work session work.
There is a word we used on earlier items, I don't want that, and I forgot what it was, but if you say table, we're actually killing them, hundred of our rules.
You're cooler. We used the word table earlier in reference to the.
And I liked that one, do you check it in minutes, what word I use?
Um, for what, a motion you made?
Yeah, well, we moved it to a subsequent meeting.
It was table to the next meeting.
No, I changed the word from table to motion.
I think it's a cement, like, silly Robert's rules of the semantics that really don't matter. We're gonna set aside and aside and come back. The reason why I say it doesn't matter is like.
I think Robert's rules is pretty important, if you're on board for a school.
I think Robert's rules is also very life centric and that, okay, but I'd like to say you're carefully this.
I want to stop for a moment. Does our board follow Robert's rules whenever it's not written in its rules? Does our board have that in to its?
Actually, no.
In its actual. I'm absolutely stunned. Almost every organization I know, in every government I have, defaults to Robert's rules. It's not written in the actual, uh, yeah, I'm just running out of words anymore, um. The, uh, the, the, the actual constitution that we have for us as a board is called.
We have meeting conduct, we have roles and responsibilities, we have a board handbook. Then once approved, we'll explain everything, now the roles, how the communication is, or our policy policies that are mentioned in here. And in other.
The document that says how we're elected and everything else.
Go ahead.
This document says how we're elected, what the positions are, what our authority is, that document.
The meeting conduct document, what is, what is it?
No, it's bigger than that, okay.
Most, some of that maybe in, in.
Yeah. I don't normally default to Robert's rules, I just don't wanna, I appreciate what your comments were. But to have to just throw it out with a bathwater like.
I'm not throwing it out.
Just have to mark it. It is a, it's very, very important, not to be that's used by many organizations.
So, eh, yeah, okay, we're gonna move forward, we can talk about Robert's rules, we can add that agenda item, um, and, and talk about that at a later time. I think for the purpose of this meeting, so I'm gonna motion to table the board operating agreements to a future meeting, I do not know what future meeting. Um, it'll be after a work session, can I just say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have three in favor and one opposed. All right, so now we move to our, uh, action item for approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five board chart.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All right, all in favor of approval? Next is the approval of the meal price for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second.
Um, uh, just the only point I have is just to, uh, state that, uh, as is shown in the, in the memo, um, that, uh, every student in our system, uh, gets a free breakfast and a free lunch. Um, so this price increase impacts individuals who would like to buy a second lunch, uh, or breakfast. I think one of the curiosities that I have in this can always for future time is, for those that, so I know that like part of why we're able to do that is because of the legislation, I think it was passed a few years ago, saying that the majority of the district's students are in that free reduced lunch, then the whole district, is that right? Something along those lines. Um, I, I wonder if there's an opportunity to say, even for those young people who, to, for others young people who do volunteer for free reduced lunch, who one meal might not be enough, is there a way that we could support them in getting a separate free meal, or would they have to always pay this cost? Even if they wouldn't have originally before this came, before the, the whole system shifted, um.
In the, the, oh, she, um, there is no perfect answer, so unfortunately, uh, the reimbursement that we get from the state and the federal government, is only for one, and so that is why it's established, that's true charge, yeah, secondly now. Uh, if we were to provide that subsidy, it would be, uh, especially with the state that we're in, would be a little bit problematic for us. So, um, and also, it would, it also might be considered that the public class, so we would have to be careful with that. But, I mean, uh, we're, we're probably talking an additional, uh, forty to fifty thousand dollars, either between, um, student and adults, because we also, uh, show you adults, students as well.
Or maybe there might be an opportunity for, um, one of the other entities like the Chaco, Chaco Foundation, um, to, you know, maybe provide, um, and a lot of the bank of money where folks could tap into, um, to actually get that extra meal. Yeah, I think very interesting thing, um, okay, uh, I think the biggest thing, I just wanted to also name that like, the price increase impacts those that are buying a second meal, um, yeah. I will just add that there's several of us on that board, so, um, we can approach it there. All right, all in favor of approval?
Hi.
Um, next is approval of the assessment account for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year.
Something.
Um, just one question, I know that in our last, um, our main last month, uh, we're able to look at the assessment, um, we got a great reception report, helping through what the assessments were, about doing them, and, um, there was some feedback from schools, depending on the timeline of that screening assessment, um, and I was wondering if those changes would reflect, I, I, let me go back and look at last year's assessment counter, I just didn't recognize it, but were there actually adjustments that were made based on that feedback? Or is it about kind of happening at the same time?
I think I remember that too, with, uh, folks were worrying about, um, their students, because it's a while to remember. Um, that were wondering, you know, maybe their students, um, performance was low because the I R E was so close to the end of the year, these kids were just.
Oh, right, after state testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we do, that when the window of custody is broad, so the school can tweak it a little bit when they do each one, so it doesn't run right up to the end like it did last year. And so we were talking to the principal about, and the assistant gives us another opportunity to, to work with the site, the site team, just I had to tweak that a little bit. So makes it countering a little bit, um, it's better for the kids.
And is there, there wasn't any way that we could move it sooner? I think, again, I think going back to like that idea of what do we do with feedback every year, right? Um, and you're not always going to be able to adjust or make changes based on the feedback that we hear. Um, so it sounds like you remember the principals that show wanting to say, hey, we heard this feedback, here's why we can or cannot accommodate that, but here's some things that you can do. Um, so that's, that's an important thing, also like what, what would happen if we were to do that assessment?
Yes, I agree. One thing we talked about, um, if, for example, if the school moved I R E, a significant amount earlier in this school year, we wouldn't see as much growth. And that's one of the, uh, few tests we have is beginning, middle, and end. So that's, um, one of the best indicators of overall growth in the middle of the year, you get a chance to adjust some instruction based on what you see mid-year. Uh, whereas like the stages is once a year, um, so it's harder to do active planning with the state test. But also the I R E, um, the way it's designed, it's a very high correlation of students who meet proficiency on I R E, and who then is expected to also, uh, meet benchmark on the state test.
So I, I hear that, of the rationale behind that, I think where I'm sharing something too, is if like, if we know that young people are not, for lack of a better word, performing well on that spring I R E test, but as well the other parties that are going, is it really a good indicator of growth?
Great question. I, I would guess if they keep it that late, it would not be, there's, um, some limited, uh, uh, such, I guess you can make other results, but both windows are pretty broad, like two months, a long time. So you could move even S P A, a state test a little sooner, and then also just still have a gap between the two, so kids aren't exhausted. And then you get a little refresher, then you do the I R E, and you still have a couple of weeks before the end of the year. And it felt, it was just really, maybe a week or two isn't enough of a difference, so the kids are still feeling like they're ready to, um, try it best, so I, I don't think about their information.
Uh, that's just director, uh, director, uh, PK twelve education college readiness, she her programs. Uh, I think it is really worth educators in the building taking a good look at that, uh, window, because it is, it's frankly, it's more like three months to do smarter bounce testing. And so while there isn't as much of a hit to us as a district, that we don't do fantastically on smarter bounce, um, it's probably worth it to do that a little bit earlier and then do the I R E later. But every building has a different rhythm, and that's why we do a lot, they have some of that latitude amongst themselves, but, um, testing fatigue is a real thing. So, um, it's just a matter of, you know, having those discussions in the building model with those different leadership teams, who are able to go about what's happening in classrooms and what's happening schoolwide, and how we, in the district office can support them. So it's multifaceted, but, uh, we're always able to monitor and adjust. And I'll just add that we also have to consider, because we're so culturally diverse, so we have an added factor of religious.
Yeah.
And cultural, um, uh, situations that really impact us. So it's not just about fatigue, it's also, so we have to shift calendaring, for example, for Ramadan and all of these things. So, and ours is multifaceted, because it's super complex, so we have to balance, and that's why we try to keep the windows as wide as we can, because we have to factor in all of those pieces as well, and then the principals and the leadership teams can, analyze what their students are, we give guidance, this is what we're giving, um, but it really is the school. The context of what they have and the nuances of the students that they have, that, so that we can balance all of that, you know, you know, before you have, you have so many things, and so we want to be mindful of all of that. See, that just adds a little layer of complexity to assessments, which is very challenging for a district. As hoping, which is ours.
So I'm gonna, um, I don't know how much this is given this I A B test, this syndrome, just that, I still don't understand why we're doing that, what we, we're doing already. I mean, say it's, um, more like the S P A, but there's no diversity. And not like the S P A, I mean, it, I don't, it's not fair, it's, it's, schools, I guess, can use it at their discretion. And we're talking about elementary schools only. It's still not fair, I mean, does it really worth that much more? I mean, versus just not doing that, another, maybe you take that top of the list.
Um, I think by the rationale so far, and as for cabinet's still on there, is that there are some accommodations that are provided for the I A Bs, that really would not be within I R E, it's not as many, um, so they thought that might be, as we're looking at it, and always triangulate your data or more, rather than, um, making everything on a certain assessment to include others, so you can see different perspectives on the students' progress. And it's always that balance of how much is, not, not just right, too much assessment time spent. So I think that is the, um, rationale why it is stayed on the list so far.
So this I A B once a year?
Um, it's, so it's, um, a couple multiple times per year.
Okay, so there should be another three and a half of I R E three time a year.
Yeah.
But it's not for every grade. So it's in preparation for a smart council starts in third grade, so it's not like we're starting with integrated, probably like twenty tests a year. It would be something that we use more in third grade to prep them for the different format of a smart balance. But once they have that acclimatization to it, it's not necessary to keep on doing that. They can if they wanted to, but there are certain points in time where it would make more sense than others.
So the threat, uh, uh, just, you know, they just test numbers that means after one year, how will the student do as long as you know they have more mastery than what they show on the test? How much of it, because they just haven't experienced the format of a smart balance test? So it ends up giving them a minute, it's not short, but a chance to practice some format, so their learning format, and so it helps remove or minimize that as a barrier, but you're able to show what they know.
Yeah, that's kind of, it's kind of sad that we have to depend on the format to, to show what they know, but. Yeah, it's a good question still.
But you know, I think it raises a good question, and I think it's something that we can talk about, because we're always like, believe me, I am in favor of less assessments. I mean, I think everyone on the team is as well, so we are, and so since we spend a lot of time ensuring that our progress monitoring is aligning to this, maybe this is the time that's here to sort of analyze where we can pull back, and then at least from a district level lens, but if schools want to do different class-based assessments, I think we can talk about that, but we can, we can actually address it and see where we need to pull back a little bit. So I think that's a really big question.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of the approving the assessment count?
Hi.
Hi. And now, uh, president, I have a couple of words. Um, I just want to find out that when I made the motion earlier, I did not ask if they would knock along, let me just, because they're not part of that. By literally, you can check the records, it's a postponed. There are two, postponed or indefinitely postponed, which is why it's preferred of table. You can table it in the strator either, um, and when you postpone, you postpone to a certain medium. Uh, and the other document I was talking about is bylaws, which you were correct to, certainly towards the R C Ws, because that's what rules us, unless we have any board rules. I'm not sure it's the guidelines that upon which we engage, it literally is special rules for the board.
Thank you.
So could we correct the record at least on the fourth vote, people, to postpone, because that was what we were about.
I guess I'll also say, we've been using the terminology of tabling, since I've been on board. Have we had issues with our auditorium language? Okay, so, um, if you want to correct yours. Okay, so we will correct the motion that was made for.
Why would she have to cable?
The board rules. And change the word to postpone. All right, that brings us to our last opportunity for public comment. Um, if you are here doing this online, uh, and would like to offer some public comment, you can do so by raising your hand, um, or typing your name in the chat, if you are here in person and would like to offer public comment, you can sign up on the sheet at the front. Um, and we would love to hear from you.
So while we're waiting, did it, it was, but, but so when this all saw spoke in the beginning, did her, did her question get answered during this board meeting?
Yes, and so I'll share, put this.
Yes, and so I'll share, but this for comment, public comment at the end, she asked that we attach the names to the org chart, and so in the weekly updates, we are going to be putting the names attached to all of the staff positions within the org chart in the next week's weekly update, yeah, the first week, that's when it pulls out, the first week, so it'll be Tuesday, first day of school, and Director Berto is going to be working on getting that on the superintendent's page, the org chart with the staffing information on the superintendent's page on the website.
Okay. I didn't hear it, I think, next week, perfect.
Yeah, yeah. All right, seeing no one else interested in offering public comment, we will move to adjourn of a meeting.
Second.
Okay. We are officially adjourned.